Good evening. Eileen, can you please open up the meeting?
Yes, I will. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, July 8th, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11th, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11th, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum must be appropriate to a judicial hearing and be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Here.
Mr. Kanter?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Stanton?
Is excused.
Is excused. Mr. Ryan is excused. Ms. Scottson?
Here.
And Chairman Seiya?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Will everyone please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, can we have a swearing-in of the zoning board professionals, please?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
I do.
Please state your names for the record.
Charles Kunlif.
Christine Bell.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chair.
Item five on the agenda, approval of minutes, regular meeting, June 24, 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Ryan, Scottson, and Seiya. We have a motion here, please.
I'll make a motion.
Hughes.
Second.
Kanter. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
Yes.
And Chairman Seiya?
Yes.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved.
Great, thank you. Are there any vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Any correspondence?
I have no correspondence.
Resolutions?
I have no resolutions.
Okay. All right, so what we have here are applications before the board. In light of discussion with the professionals, we're going to take the first case, which is case number BA 20-101, AAR SHW Property LLC. And Mr. Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
I'm going to read it out what this is, Mr. Pape. This is a use variance, bulk variance, and amended final major site plan. Application of AAR SHW Property LLC as applicant and owner seeking an amended approval to modify certain conditions of the prior resolutions on premises known as Block 168, Lot 19.11, Fairfield Road. Expiration date, October 22nd, 2024.
Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals, and public, good evening. My name is Kenneth Pape with the firm of Heilburn Pape, and this evening I have the privilege and the opportunity to represent AAR SHW Property LLC. This is the company that purchased the rock-solid property and developed it in accordance with the approvals previously granted. Before we begin a substantive presentation, we had provided our legal notices to your secretary in advance. If you could have the record reflect that our notices are in order and the board has taken jurisdiction.
They're in order, Mr. Pape. The board is jurisdiction.
Thank you. There was an application filed with this board initially requesting permission to modify the approvals to have multiple tenants in the building. That application is officially, this evening, withdrawn. There is no request to have multiple tenants. This board granted approvals for the building to be developed with one, two, three, or four tenants, and there's no change requested. This board did grant approvals with the requirement that the applicant do substantial off-site improvement work. You'll recall the board required the construction of a pump station and 7,000 feet of sewer lines to provide sewer for the region. The pump station and the sewer lines are built. They're in place. There was also a requirement that this applicant paved certain portions of Fairfield Road. South of our client's property, the pavement is complete. 6,500 feet of road have been milled and completely repaved and striped. It is completely in place. North of our client's, beginning with the southern edge of our client's property and north to Route 33, is the subject of our request for relief this evening. There are two industrial buildings approved north of our client's property. On the Stavola property immediately to our north, there is a warehouse approved. It's approved. It's now in court. There's an argument over that approval. And there is one across the street on lands that are known as the Frisa, F-R-I-S-A, property that is also approved. And there's another one around the corner called the Foreman property. All three of these properties, when they are developed, will necessarily excavate into Fairfield Road, north of our client's site. The purpose of coming before you this evening is to request that the applicant be permitted to post adequate performance guarantees with the township. We're prepared to enter into a contract with the township and to postpone that work until no later than December 31, 2025. We want it to twilight. We want to create the opportunity for that to work, but not... December 31, 2025. And that is the summation of the applicant's request. Our client also had pending before your engineer an administrative revision request to change onsite gates on the property, something that if we weren't here this evening, I imagine that Mr. Kunlif would consider administratively, but since we are here, it's my understanding that Mr. Kunlif is asking that we present that to you. That is the outline and probably more than the full testimony that you're going to hear from Mr. Kasuba, who is alongside of me. Mr. Kasuba is at Active Acquisitions. If we could have him sworn in, place his credentials, and I'll have him place all of that officially on the record.
Please do, Mr. Pape.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Robert Kasuba, K-A-S-U-B-A.
Mr. Kasuba, take a moment to share with the board your position with regard to the applicant.
Sure. I am the Director of Acquisitions at Active Acquisitions, which is an affiliate of the applicant and the owner of the property. It's the subject of the hearing tonight.
And you just heard my description of the relief that your company is requesting of the board. Did I describe the relief accurately?
100%.
I'm going to ask if you could take a moment. Mine was an introduction. If you could place on the record specifically what Active Acquisitions is asking of this board this evening.
Sure. At the risk, I don't want to belabor what Mr. Pape already presented to the board, but my testimony is going to reiterate what he just said, which is that there's two fundamental requests this evening. One relates to the mill and overlay of the road from the southern property line north until 2025, December. If we could put up the exhibit, that's wonderful. If you could just pan out just for a little bit, just to show, the green area on this exhibit just shows all of the work that's been completed.
Hey, Rob.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can't. The board members can't see it. Looks like it's there. It's just very faint.
It's coming.
It's coming. It's coming?
There it comes.
Okay. So with this exhibit demonstrates, it shows that the green area is the area where all of the work has been completed, all the mill and overlay work from Baker Road south to Route 524. All of that work has been completed. We have also completed the road widening in front of our site. We have also completed, as Mr. Pape indicated, the pump station has been installed. The stretch of road that is in red that's marked there is what we're asking to delay and to have that done in 2025. And we will, as Mr. Pape said, agree to enter into an agreement with the municipality that will assure adequate security, that that work will be performed. We are... If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions on it, but everything else relating to that request is just as Mr. Pape outlined in his introductory comments.
Every other condition that this board placed in prior resolutions, with no exceptions, every other condition of approval, your company will address at this time. It's this one condition that you're seeking in the postponement of performance.
It's... Yes, it is this condition. All the other conditions, we're not seeking relief from, except for the gates that was referenced earlier.
So the existing red that's up there right now, what is the surface roadway condition of the present?
It's inserviceable condition. The work has been done for the road widening, but it just hasn't been the final mill and overlay.
Charlie?
Yeah, so if the board will recall, they extended water and sewer all the way down to 524A, you know, 6,500 feet. As part of the road open permit, they were required to resurface the road edge-to-edge. That's been completed for some time now. Because it was a use variance, the board had conditions regarding truck traffic about resurfacing, not just across our frontage all the way up to Route 33, which the applicant agreed to. That's what they're seeking the relief from. You know, my concern from the board's perspective is, you know, how long does it take for that paving to happen? I'm glad to hear that there's like a sunset on that agreement and that it'll be recorded in a developer's agreement with the township and December 31st, 2025. So, you know, hopefully we're seeing it paved in the fall of that year, so it's not, you know, 30 degrees in December and we're trying to pave. So... And then as far as the onsite gates, I went back and looked at all the iterations of the plans, going back to the original use application, all the resolutions. That was always proposed. It was nothing that was specifically required per like ordinance or the request of the board or anything like that. You know, I don't have any issue with it being an administrative field request. I just thought I'd bring it up, getting a resolution if the board acts favorably on this night to make sure it's just part of the record.
Okay, thank you. Andy? We're going to get a performance bond? Is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, there'd be two conditions. One would relate to a performance guarantee or bond, I guess, in an amount to be determined by the township engineers. And the second would be a developer's agreement with the township, as Mr. Pape noted, which would contractually obligate the applicant to make the improvements.
And December 2025 comes along, if the work is not done, the town can then call the bond and complete the work?
Correct.
Okay.
And one other thing, Mr. Pape and Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. And I... Ms. Spiro, this is a little off-point, had... I'm sorry, I had the email up. Sent an email. Hold on, sorry.
I think it was concerned regarding the condition of the buffer plantings along Fairfield Road.
Yeah, she had sent a letter to Active Acquisitions on June 13th indicating that plantings along Fairfield Road, the contractor never removed the straps and the trees were strangled. So I just... Is that something you can take care of as well?
So, thank you. Shari Spiro brought that to my attention. Before the meeting began, she and Mr. Kasuba spoke. I'll speak first for Mr. Kasuba, and then I'll ask that he confirm. She described... Shari described exactly what the issue was, and Mr. Kasuba's response was, "I will meet you at the site and we will satisfy all of your requirements." Mr. Kasuba, could you affirm?
Yes, that is correct.
So... And I wanted to point out that Mr. Baer described, there'll be performance guarantees. 10% of that performance guarantee is cash, and there'll also be an inspection account established for that. So there's the inspection account cash, the guaranteed cash, the performance bond, and the developer's agreement with the township. That would be conditions of the relief requested. And that, Mr. Chair, is your applicant's presentation.
Well, the gates, what were we talking about? Now you want to modify or...
So if we could pull up the exhibit on the gates, if you will. These are... This is very atypical for warehouse design, but the approved plans actually showed gates, more or less blocking off most of, but not entirely, the loading dock area. Very few end-users want gates. We've been marketing the property. No one has been requesting gates. No one's been asking us to install them. As I believe the board engineer indicated, it was... It's not required by ordinance. It was just something that was shown on the site plan that was approved. So we're just asking to have the ability to remove the gates that are bubbled on this exhibit from the plan.
Yeah, so it was three arm gates, and then there was one rolling gate kind of along the front loading bay there.
Correct.
And anytime we put in gates, the fire official, fire bureau asks for knockboxes just so they can get access. Without the gates, you know, you shouldn't be able to completely, you know, encircle the building if there's any event of a fire, but on top of that, they still have all the repeater systems in the building and everything like that. So, you know, it was really nothing that was required by the board. It was something they proposed for their own use of the property. If they say they don't need it, I really don't see an issue with the elimination of it.
Board members? Go ahead, Mr. Kanter.
I've passed by there a number of times. Are any of... Is any of the warehouse currently being used?
No.
No.
Okay, so the paving of the road, technically, it's not immediately needed. It's not going to be needed until you have tenants there.
We are in the process of selling the building. It is our hope that we get a CO in the very near future, and by near future, I mean within a couple of weeks. And then we will hopefully see the building being occupied, you know, through the end of this year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question.
Mr. Mertens?
What about the drainage? We rectify that situation because I know it was part of the resolution. Is there any more issues over there? Because that was my primary concern.
Mr. Justin Yost and his inspectors are the ones whose response is most important, but all of the issues that he has identified have been addressed. It's not flooding.
Okay. Charlie, any... Christine?
Nothing.
Andy? For something like this, do we need to open it up to public?
Yes.
Okay. Can we open this up to public then? We got a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen?
At this point, the chairman has opened this hearing up to members of the public for any questions or comments regarding this application. If you have any questions or comments, please step up to the podium. You'll be required to give your name and address and be sworn in. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Mark Parisi. I live at Two Castle Court.
Oh, sorry.
If anyone wants to swear me in.
Yeah. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
The witness is sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Parisi.
Do I need to spell my name for the record?
You did, didn't you?
No.
I thought, oh, you gave your...
Mark, M-A-R-C, Parisi, P-A-R-I-S-I.
As a former board member, I think we know who you are.
Thank you. I sometimes forget who I am. So I want to speak about this, the relief that this applicant is requesting tonight. I understand that he's... They're withdrawing their amended use variance. However, there are some concerns about some flooding that's still occurring along Fairfield Road. And I think it's very important that when any applicant comes before our land use boards and they make representations regarding any condition or outcome or how something is going to operate, that they're held accountable to that, to make sure that all the representations that they've made to this board come to fruition. And in this respect, there... Back in March of 2022, when this applicant came to the board, there was testimony from their experts regarding some of the flooding issues that occurred in that area of Fairfield Road. I just want to... I could read something that a friend of mine prepared, but I don't want to bore you by droning on reading, but I do want to note that in Exhibit A7, which is their storm water management statement prepared by Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners dated September 22nd, 2023, that they essentially rely upon their prior representations in their documents from back in 2022. Specifically, and I'll pull up that report, just hang on for one second. Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners report dated February 4th, 2022. It was in response to a board engineer's review letter. And in that letter, in that response, they stated that there would be no more... No ponding of the water on Fairfield Road, that that would... It's on page 2 of 4 at the top. It says, "In addition to lowering the water surface elevations for the aforementioned storm events, the curb cuts previously at elevation 115.83 have been raised to 116.20. Thus, no ponding will occur during any storm event." And it's my understanding that people that live up in the Fairfield Road area have experienced driving up and down the road after a storm event where there's substantial overland flooding and ponding along Fairfield Road. So I...
Mr. Kasuba?
I'm not aware of the flooding conditions that he's referencing.
Okay.
So I just... I think it's important that this zoning board is aware that if an applicant's going to come before you seeking relief, that they're held accountable for any flooding issues that they had previously testified would be resolved as a result of their storm water management, their bases, their drainage, their swells, and the like. And I believe there's other people here that may testify tonight that actually have photographs of the actual flooding along Fairfield Road.
Charlie?
So what I can tell you is, as part of their road open permit and their approval, they were required to submit like roadway grading plans to go along with the roadway resurfacing. The grading that you see out there is not the final roadway grading that's going to happen, so, you know, it's possible that some of the ponding issues are in relation to the road not being established to its final grading. I can tell you, there is an existing system on Fairfield Road that's been in existence prior to this applicant developing this piece of property, where the history of the system and how it functions is complicated, and there's also, it ties into a conservation incident, and there's only so much that can be done with this. As far as the applicant's onsite improvements, the entirety of their site is captured and sent to a significant wet pond at the back of the property. In the course of the construction of this site, myself and representatives from the Township Engineering Office met with their representatives out there and expressed some concerns about, you know, condition of the water in the pond and things like that. They subsequently excavated additional two feet of the wet pond, which is additional stormwater storage on the site and things like that. So as far as their onsite runoff, you know, they're capturing everything and it's going to this wet pond. You know, I know there have been correspondence and conversations with Justin Yost with Township Engineering. You know, this is something we can ask them to investigate further prior to getting their CEO. It's possible the system may need to be cleaned again prior to them getting the CEO, if it's clogged. You know, the system itself relies partially on some recharge, so, you know, it could be that the system may need to be cleaned. I can confirm it was cleaned. You know, this is going back, I want to say, over a year and a half ago now, so it's possible that the system could need some continued maintenance. And then, you know, going forward, it's the township system in the right of way, you know, there's going to need to be continued maintenance of that system.
And Amory?
Yeah, I was... I drive that road probably four days a week.
Me, too.
And I can attest to the fact that during bad weather, it definitely has water. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. It's also, the grading is concerning because of the fact that it's very unstable. It's just, when I'm driving on it, and especially in bad weather, it's dangerous. It gets to the point where it can be dangerous. So I'm struggling with voting on this because of that. Because, like I said, I drive it, my daughter drives it, we're on that road all the time, and it concerns me greatly.
Well, thank you. I mean, my concern is that, you know, I can appreciate why, you know, this applicant may not want to mill and pave a road if they're going to be having to dig it up and put in additional, you know, infrastructure on the ground. I get that. I think any reasonable person would get that. When they eventually will put in this drainage, how much longer the residents that have to drive along this road in poor condition, whether or not there's going to continue to be flooding on the road in the winter months, is that going to ice over? I think there's a lot of considerations. Other considerations are that, you know, there's anticipated other development across the street. There's a 500,000-square-foot warehouse that was approved that's in litigation, another 200,000-square-foot warehouse just north of this project that was approved that's in litigation. They were, you know, they went before the planning board, not this board. I have reason to believe that if this board was aware that this same developer was going to come before the planning boards in the months after they got their approval from you guys to build another million square feet of warehousing, you guys may have voted differently on this application. So, you know, I just think that it's important that every... That this board understands that this applicant before you today is also the same parent company applicant for three other warehouse projects that are before the planning board. And I understand it's not your jurisdiction, but you are the zoning board, and you should know that, that if this developer is going to come to Howell and build heavy industrial warehousing, and that's going to impact the quality of life of residents, that they have to fulfill every single promise that they made to this board and to the planning board and to our township officials if they're going to do business in Howell. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi. So Charlie, what I heard you say was that this applicant in itself has taken care of stormwater management, but the roadway is still flooding. They're not the cause of it, is what I think I...
Yeah, so, like I said, any site runoff that's generated from the site itself is captured and self-contained to the stormwater management basin that's provided on the site. The system that's been there for many, many, many years had an existing drainage problem before any of these improvements went in. You know, the applicant put representations on the record that they were going to ameliorate some of those drainage concerns with that. I can tell you, they did the shoulder widening, they curved the frontage. There is a drainage swell along the entirety of the property frontage, which ties into this system. There are curb cuts to let water overland flow into that ditch. The roadway grading is certainly not finalized. As part of the road open permit, they had to submit a grading plan showing that the road had proper cross slope, getting it to the side of the road. That also accommodated some of the potential future development that might be coming down the road to make sure that all the grading would work in unison. It's just that development hasn't come in yet, and the paving hasn't happened yet because they haven't paved it in accordance with the road open permit requirement. So at some point, it's going to be regraded, and it's going to flow to where it's supposed to flow. It's just some of it is, I think... It's just, some of it is, I think, it's not necessarily getting to the edge of the road until that final paving occurs.
Thank you. Christina?
I really have nothing to add.
Okay. Andy? The-
I think you have other-
One, okay, and then I have something for us, okay?
Janis Romisoukas, R O M I S O U K A S.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. I live at 314 Baker Road. I totally agree with you. That road gets flooded. It gets flooded a lot. Right now, with the uneven paving sets there, it is scary. I can tell you, I drive on the left lane going because I'd rather drive on a smooth area that's halfway decent than all the bumps and the mess that's on the, if you're going towards Route 33. There is sinkholes on there, so there's constantly, like you're constantly going over bumps. And it is not safe. They finally got down all the telephone poles in front where they widened the road, but there's cones there. What's under the cones? You know, it scares me to death. I mean, I hate to say, but crazy drivers scare me to death. And they're not even going to see those cones at night and they're going to go flying down that section of uneven. And what's under the cones? I'm not sure. But I agree, this, it should be done. And I can tell you that a lot of people I knew were going, "We can't wait till this road finally gets milled and make it safe again." Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just, to address the issue about the cones, is that the utility company took forever to move the poles. That wasn't us, that was the utility company. We will do, you know, we're going to fill up the holes in accordance with the township standards that we receive so that those are going to be level with the existing, you know, pavement and the barrels will be removed before CO. We're not asking for relief on that.
And that pole movement just recently occurred after waiting more than a year for JCPenney to do it.
Okay. Ma'am?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
So let me go.
Okay. Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
MJ Sepulveda, S E P-
You got to talk into the mic.
I'm sorry, S E P U L V E D A. I'm in the Jerseyville area.
We need your address, ma'am.
Just side court.
Sorry, the side court. Okay, so I- MJ Sepulveda. MJ Sepulveda. Is that better? Okay. All right, so then I guess I'm going to have to hold the mic here because it's not-
There you go.
Here we go. So I have here some pictures because I like yourself. I'm up and down that road probably every day. And it's unfortunate that you have no record of it, but I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't expect it because you're probably not living in the area. So if I may present these to somebody, I don't know if it's up front or here.
Give them to the board administrator, Mr. Ball.
I would also like to mention, I recall the attorney for active acquisitions clearly on the zoning board meeting saying, "We are going to take care of the flooding problem, even though it's not our problem and it's not the construction. We are going to do that because we're a nice, my client is a nice guy." I also would like to, once the folks have it here, there's a couple copies, you could probably give one to them and one to up front.
You took these yourself, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. And they are dated there, December 18. There's also one in March to 2024. Do you have four there? All right, so maybe what I can do is, once the board up front has a picture, I will, hopefully it's in the same order. First picture is December 18. You could actually see the building, the warehouse. You could see how high that is, and I am driving. That's extremely high. Okay. Next picture is actually approaching that huge flooded street on Fairfield. I went back there actually later that morning because I said, "Let me try from the other side to see if there's any draining." About an hour later, and this one that says Fairfield Road, December 18, 8:46, that's coming from like Route 33 area going down. So the warehouse would be on the right-hand side. So you could see that full, and an hour later, not drained. The last photo that I have is March 2, and that is basically from the New Jersey natural gas area coming down from Route 33. And I have plenty more pictures that demonstrate how the flooding in that street is really terrible. And I would hate for the zoning board to say, "Okay, the condition that we originally had for you that is not being met, we're going to let it go because our town residents are going to pick up the bill." Because if it's, if there's nothing more that we can do there, then I don't know who's really, you know, where's the onus go in terms of safety for travel on that street? And that flooding also is not just on Fairfield. It goes all the way down to Bennett Road. Like the flood on Bennett Road is also, it's terrible. So again, like Mr. Parisi mentioned, this is, you know, December and March, not terribly cold icy weather, but put icy weather on that, you're going to have a lot of accidents going down that street. And again, the condition of repairing the flooding problem, if the system is not capable of draining, then maybe they need to go back and reconsider their plans in terms of proper drainage. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in public?
So the previous system that was there prior to all of this construction, it sounds like it was going to be rectified or somewhat worked on with them, but is that in part creating the issue we've got going on on Fairfield? That, I mean, is it something that we are going to have to deal with as a township?
So I can tell you that that system has had an issue prior to any development occurring there. The road itself isn't final paved. There's probably depressed curb along that whole edge there that if the road's not final paved, is probably an inch and a half proud, maybe two inches proud of letting water freely flow into the drainage ditch. That could certainly be attributing to that issue. During construction, when there's drainage infrastructure and you're excavating and exposing soils, it's not atypical to have inlet filter fabric put on these structures. Once you get a little bit of silt on there, that can significantly, it does a job. It stops silts from getting into the system, but it can fill up the road. You know, certainly, like I said, they did, as part of their approval, clean the system, televise and everything like that. If the board feels it prudent and the applicant's amenable, I think we could ask them to reconfirm that the system is still clean before issuance of the COO to make sure that it's collecting the water that it, that it's supposed to collect. Is that something the applicant would be amenable to, Mr. Pape?
Sure. I have a couple of comments, but I wanted to wait until yours were complete.
I have a question for the attorney.
Do you want to close public first, Mr. Sperry?
Anyone else in public? Not seeing any?
I'll make a motion to close, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Eileen, we're close to public.
The public portion of this hearing has now been closed.
This is Pandora's box, sir. And we have an inherent problem. And inhering the residents, it's, it can be a safety hazard as well. So what's the township's position on all of this? What is the planning board? What is the township engineer doing? What is the land officer doing? What's taking place behind the scenes to address these, these issues? Because as you know, stormwater management is one of the things that we're very concerned with.
No, I agree, and it's, I think you've seen many of my review letters on applications and it's very uncommon for someone to get to the board before there being significant revisions to the stormwater management. I can tell you what's happening in the roadway there. I would be very, very surprised if it's coming from onsite runoff. Like I said, it's all captured and directed to that wet pond basin. A lot of this is existing conditions that, albeit the applicant said they were going to ameliorate, you know, possible suggestion, you know, maybe the applicant would be amenable to maybe amending the bond to include some kind of coverage for rectifying, cleaning the drainage system and some kind of, you know, improvement to ensure that the system is functioning correctly. Like I said, the system itself, there's some challenge with it because it drains into a conservation easement and there's certain restrictions on what you can and cannot do with a conservation easement. And that's part of the equation. But I'll let Mr. Pape repine if there's anything they'd be amenable to.
The recommendations or suggestions of Mr. Conliffe are acceptable to the applicant, but what I wanted to, when we came before you, and it wasn't, Active Acquisition wasn't your original applicant, it was Kaiser Wong, rock solid. When we came before you, amongst the things that was brought to our attention was that the, there was a flooding condition off-site and we were directed that we had to capture all of our water, we had to direct all of our water away from Fairfield Road so that there would be no exacerbation of that condition. And we also did indicate that we would clean the existence, there's a system that's owned by the township. We agreed that we would clean that system, power wash it, and to televise it to make sure that it was clear. And we also indicated that when the road was constructed, the final road construction, that we would elevate the road and that we would make certain that water was pitched to the swell, the swell that has been built. So what's happened so far is all of the onsite work has been done. All of the onsite stormwater has been captured and directed away from the roadway. The swell has been installed along the roadway. We previously, as Charlie indicated, cleaned out that system. I think it's a very good recommendation that we go to it again. We can, we can power clean it again, we can again televise it. And I also recognize that there is a continuing concern of the township that there be, that this applicant stand behind the representations that were made. And that can be, that can be incorporated into the bond. We can ask either Charlie or Justin Yost, what would be the appropriate additional amount in that bond to make certain that the town has the funds to do this work if the applicant doesn't? So to the extent that this applicant could address the issue to date, they have, and they have also, and you've heard from Charlie, have not exacerbated the condition at all.
Yes, Mr. Cantor.
If the work, the milling and the overlay on Fairfield Road that was promised was to be done now, would that alleviate the flooding? Charlie?
It's certainly going to make sure that water gets into the swell along the frontage into the, you know, drainage system that it drains to. Yeah, it would certainly, you know, there are other things obviously in play with other potential utility improvements and things like that. I certainly appreciate the request and to not have to repave the road three separate times within, you know, a matter of a couple of years. So, but I mean, yeah, I think you've heard Mr. Pape say they'd be willing to provide some additional guarantees along with the road opening permit guarantee for the milling and paving to help ameliorate this concern. I think that might be their prudent.
So what are we doing in the meantime? And God forbid there's an accident in the meantime.
Yeah, because if we can go into the wintertime and that flooding freezes, that's not treatable with just putting salt down. And I don't, I'm not comfortable with the way it is.
No, I've driven that road during the winter, it's not-
My, Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Gersberg. He is the managing member and principal of your applicant.
You need to be sworn if you're going to testify. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I affirm, I do, yes.
Do you affirm?
Yes, thank you.
Can you just raise that mic so we can pick you up?
Sure.
Say your name for the record and spell your last.
Seth Gersberg. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I just wanted to give a little bit of color and tell you what we've been dealing with in this site specifically over the course of the last year and a half. We built, as you indicated, we did build the stormwater basin. It's like a lake. It's very significant. And then the major storms that happened in December, which the photos are from, ended up blowing out all of our, all of our infrastructure because the runoff coming from the solar field above us was so significant that we didn't contemplate its flow onto our site. So we then met again and went back and actually, despite the fact that that stormwater basin was built and was already full of water, we went back in and removed another two feet of earth from that stormwater basin so that we could actually accommodate the entirety of not just our site, but the site above us. And prior to our getting there, there was a lot of real soil issues with respect to soil coming out onto the roadway, and that doesn't happen the way, the way it had done previously. The water that we're talking about isn't coming, is no longer coming from our site or the site behind us. So both those sites have been accommodated with the stormwater infrastructure that we've placed on the site, as you indicated. The biggest requirement that's going to help this project is underground piping that's going to help service sites north of us, the Stavola site, and also, you know, really it's the Stavola site that needs to get piped. And that won't be done if we just simply mill and overlay. And in addition to that, there's other infrastructure that needs to come in on that roadway. The infrastructure includes sewer and also the water lines as it comes from 33 South. So the original request here was to ask for the ability to bond the required activity such that we could do all of it next summer. And so that instead of doing a mill and overlay job now that's patched and then come back and doing, and having to do it again. And this mill and overlay job, based on the timing, wouldn't have the pipings in it anyway or the, or the ability to, or the ability to go back into the current contemplated outflow. So I guess the, the real question here is whether or not, even if we did the mill and overlay without the piping to support the northern sites or the site across the street, there probably, I mean, I don't think there'll be much difference on, you know, there'll be some roadway improvements, but it wouldn't be significant. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, what's the fastest and best way to accommodate the concerns? I would also say that we sent somebody to the site daily to put those, to put those barriers in when they left the poles there, when the, when the roadway was wide, was widened. And we were super concerned about safety. And everything underneath those, the, those barriers is going to be ultimately in the next week is going to be filled and patched. And so really the question is what the right outcome is for accommodating the township's need, which is to have all of the infrastructure done. And that was the nature of this request, is that not to have to do a cursory overlay before we do all the rest of the infrastructure work. But, but if we were to chart where the runoff's coming from, it's not coming from, from our site today. It's just not. I mean, you could see it.
So sir, you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
So is the, and if I'm out of bounds, stop me. Is this, is the delay or the requested delay also hanging on the Stavola decision? So that it's not, okay.
No, no. Even if we don't have the opportunity to develop the Stavola site, Even if we don't have the opportunity to develop the Stavola site, we'll bond the requirement to still do the work next summer irrespective of the outcome on those sites. So if if we're still on appeal for the next two years, we're still doing the work.
Okay, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barilo. Put your mic so I can get.
I'm sorry. So even if we agree to delay this until December 31st of 25, and and at that point, if you have to mill and overlay, how is that helping this situation?
Because at that point, we'll bond the requirement to do not just the mill and overlay, but actually to install the infrastructure.
All of the infrastructure.
All the infrastructure.
That's what I thought I heard you say, Mr. Pape, earlier, right? Yes. So one way or another, we'll get what we need. In the meantime, the current situation where there's potholes and so forth, is there a temporary thing you can do such you're going to be filling some holes? Can you fill in and kind of smoothen it out a little bit?
Well, the first thing is we have to, we have to get it cleaned up right away because I just drove it again today, and it's, and there's definitely just, it needs to be cleaned up. And so we'll take care of that immediately. We'll begin the patching immediately. And and we'll be cognizant of the concern that everyone has here, which is that it's rough. It's not going to be a brand new job, but what it will ensure is that we're in a position where we could plan the full job at a single activity, with a single activity next summer. And that's something we absolutely can't do now. And and the big solution will be guaranteed instead of waiting for the other projects to get, move forward.
Mr. Gersberg, just so that it is clear to the board, there's a stormwater improvement that the planning board imposed on the project called Stavola. And you've described that as an underdrain system that will address this problem. Are you suggesting, are you offering to take those improvements and put them on the bond here so that it's no longer just associated with the Stavola site, but you're transferring that improvement to this site?
Yes.
You're getting something that does not exist right now. You're getting, you're getting a stormwater improvement reviewed by the planning board, approved by the planning board. And whether or not Stavola is built, you're getting it on this project.
Because we're waiting on the Stavola decision.
That's why I just asked.
No, no. That's the right question. We're guaranteeing it regardless.
Regardless, they will guarantee it.
We'll take it off Stavola.
It would be on the bond. He's testifying, it would be on the bond.
Yes.
Then why aren't we just doing it now?
I know, exactly.
If it's going to be guaranteed the next summer, it's going to get done. Or not now, but, you know.
Mr. Hughes, we've got the water line and the sewer line and all of the construction activity that's associated with those projects, not just the stormwater. The stormwater is the one thing that he's accelerating.
I got you.
Board members?
Thank you.
Seth, thank you.
So this flooding has been going on for quite some time. This is even before the applicant did anything over there. Is that correct?
So, yeah, yes. And I can tell you that it's my understanding that this, before this even became an application to the board, this applicant had met with a prior township engineer and was aware of this issue. And that's a lot of the shoulder widening and curb cuts and the swell and all that stuff was based off of discussions with the engineer at the time, which they then carried through to their application. And I just want to add some some more clarity to what Mr. Gersberg said, right? So, you know, you know, he said that the stormwater design didn't contemplate the solar field. That's not truly accurate. What happened years ago, under prior government agency administrations, they changed the rules to promote the development of solar fields, which for stormwater management perspectives, they don't treat any of the panels as impervious cover. They treat as whatever the ground cover is underneath it. So as far as the board and stormwater management design, we can require them to treat the site and design it for whatever the ground cover that's underneath it. The reality of it is there's probably more runoff that comes from the site than what the rules allow you and what the state law allows you to do.
Because of the, because of the velocity of the runoff.
Because of the velocity and things like that. So that's, the applicant, as they indicated, did come in and actually dig two additional feet deeper of that basin. So that's additional stormwater storage that's collecting runoff from their site and from the solar field. So it wasn't like they didn't contemplate the solar design. It's, you know, unfortunately, it's bad legislation coming from, you know, the state level and the, you know, practicality versus the, you know, reality of the situation.
So is the issue coming from the solar site?
No, all that is captured and goes to the stormwater management basin.
So if if there was no solar site and the applicant wasn't, I mean, this flooding would be happening?
Correct. If they didn't build a site.
So it's a township issue. Yes?
It was up until the point where the applicant that originally got the approval said that they would take care of it, or they would help mitigate it. I was on the board at that time, so I remember that.
Yeah, and we heard testimony that they were going to take care of it because that was our concern when we heard from the people that lived there that this was going to be taken care of.
And what was the timeframe back then of when it was getting taken care of?
Well.
You got to turn your mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. All right.
The applicant agreed with, or committed to the board that they would go out to the site with the township engineer, would identify the issues, and to the extent that they could, and they, and they have done this, they would address the condition. And they have. They've done it by removing stormwater that was coming from this site onto the road, creating the swell along the road, cleaning out the existing municipal system. We're offering to do that again. And then as part of another development, the property that's next door, the planning board required further improvements. And those are the improvements that Mr. Gersberg just indicated. He would transfer from that project and put on this project so that this became a burden on this project, whether or not the Stavola site ever got developed.
Okay, so Mr. Pape, can you summarize everything that you're requesting and what we would be getting should we see fit to to move this along?
Mr. Chair, initially, the applicant has withdrawn the request for multiple tenants in the building. And second, the applicant is requesting the administrative relief that your engineer described, and that is to remove the the internal gates that were part of the system that were never required by any ordinance. They were just something that Mr. Wong, your original applicant, placed on his plan. And the third is to to accept the offer of the applicant to take the stormwater improvements, the underground stormwater improvements that are associated with the Stavola project and transfer them to this to include them in a performance bond, involves bonding, cash and inspection fees. Include that in a performance bond. Also in the performance bond would be 100% of the road improvements that we're asking to postpone. So you'd have a bond for the stormwater system that would have been part of Stavola. You'd have a bond for all of these road improvements. You'd have cash inspection fees, and you'd have a contract between your applicant and the town, a developer's agreement, that imposes the obligation to complete this by the December of 2025. And if there's a failure, that the town has the absolute right to take the bonds and the funds and do the work themselves.
And then in the current?
And, and, Mr. Chair, at the request of your engineer, your applicant would clean out the existing municipal system as they did once before, do it again, just in case it is clogged, and to do the television testing of it to confirm that it's in good and working order. And that, Mr. Chair, is the description of what your applicant's offering to you.
And you'll also, the unpaved portion that's in red on the screen, you'll also smooth it out for the time being on a temporary basis to get us to where it's more serviceable than it is now. I know, understand it might be a little rough, but, you know, we certainly don't want our residents dipping into holes and stuff like that, you know?
Mr. Chair, I think the the best answer is to say, Mr. Gersberg has placed that on the record this evening, and that we'll gladly meet with, whether it's Charlie or Justin, in the field to immediately identify those portions of the road that need that attention.
And then Charlie? Where you say the low point is, where it's possibly entering onto the roadway? Is there a way to mitigate that for this this summer and into the winter?
So I can tell you, it's it's not water coming from the site. It's roadway coming from Fairfield Road that always drains to this low point. So I think cleaning the system, you know, maybe replacing the inlet filters so that way it's allowing to freely drain is going to certainly help ameliorate that in the short term. And any final improvement, you know, I would say, prior to release of bonds, it's got to be the acceptance of, you know, the township engineering department.
Okay. All right, so go ahead. You have a question?
Did cleaning the system help the last time? Do we know?
Charlie?
It's my understanding that, yes, it did. But, I mean, it's, I can tell you this.
That was a year and a half ago, two years ago?
Yeah, it's, you know, they cleaned it immediately after the approval, and this site's been under development for at least over a year, if not more than that, so.
So certain sand might have gotten in there.
And so when can that be done? When can that be cleaned? How soon can we alleviate some of this water that's on this roadway?
Do it as soon as possible.
Do it now.
Yeah, now, before CO.
Do it before CO. Do it now.
I mean, we need to do something.
Yeah, I mean.
Either do it by the applicant or the town's got to come up, you know, with some type of engineering scheme to alleviate that water.
Yeah. I mean, I've driven that road for 20-plus years, and it, yes, has there been water on it? Absolutely. But I definitely feel like it's gotten worse over the last two, three years. No question.
Okay.
Just by two cents.
So what is the pleasure of the board? Because what you got is a guarantee, a little cleaning now, a little patching now. If the planning board's applicant goes through, we get the sewer and the water and the stormwater. If it doesn't, we have a performance bond from the, that's going to be implemented from the planning board approvals that the township can turn on in December of 2025.
Does the applicant work along with the township on this? Would you be working along with the township with the cleaning of it? And they would be with you and they would inspect it after the fact? Like, how does that all?
Yes, I mean, we would agree that it would be subject to the township engineer or board engineer, whoever the appropriate individual is, you know, sign off on the cleaning and also any patching work that may be necessary in the road.
It's usually Justin Yost who comes out and dictates what those improvements are, and his staff does the inspections.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Your predecessor, Mr. Nansen's voice is in the back of my head. If we do nothing, then the repairs and the drainage and everything won't get done. If we vote on this positively, they've committed to us to do all of that work. So by doing, by passing this and giving them that leeway, they have committed to, we have to wait until 2025, but at least the proper drainage, piping and everything will get done.
Because we're getting more now than we had before.
Right. But if we, if we vote no, we don't get it, basically.
Correct.
I just wish it could be done sooner. A lot sooner.
Well, they're going to clean it, and they're going to patch it.
Well, can we have a commitment on time as far as them cleaning it? I mean, they said right away, but I mean, that's still kind of vague.
I think before CO was a nice.
Yeah.
And CO is two weeks.
When's the CO?
I believe I testified we're hoping to get it within a couple of weeks. So it's currently July 8th.
I believe it's under contract, correct?
But these things tend to sometimes get prolonged. I mean, we should have a date, right?
Yeah, that's what, I'm not buying.
I agree, Rich.
By the end of the month, in other words. The end of July, you'll have it all taken care of, right?
Yep, we can agree to do it by the end of July. Hopefully, hopefully next week.
They agree, they agree.
Okay. So then what's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the requested use variance and bulk variance and amended site plan with all of the conditions and commitments that the applicant has made to us tonight.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Eileen?
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Barilo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
I think with the CO provision, I'll say yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way. I was really opposed to this because I didn't want this to continue. But as Mr. Cantor said, and the chairman, if we do nothing, we're not going to get the best deal for the residents, and I think that's what we have to consider here. So I'll vote yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Scottson?
I totally understand what everybody else on the board is saying, and I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I cannot vote yes. So my vote is no.
Okay, so, you know, this is a tough one. This is a hedge, basically, to ensure that we're going to get the improvement, and it's going to be guaranteed through performance bonds. And the township will have the opportunity to enact. And so with that, you know, I can't let that slip away from us. And using the planning board's engineering for Stavola, should that application never come to fruition, we will put the sewer, water, drainage, all in under that bond, correct?
The water and sewer lines are already a responsibility of the applicant, it's timing. But what we're now doing is taking the Stavola drainage system.
System and putting it in. Okay, with that, I vote yes. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I had asked if your attorney would entertain having a resolution memorialized this evening. I know that that's not the usual rule. There's no prohibition on it. We are scheduled to be in front of the governing body.
I'm sorry.
What's the day that we go to the governing body?
It's, I'm sorry, it's at next week's meeting. We were going to be in front of the governing body, asking them for this agreement because we are pushing to get a CO in the very near future.
Mr. Pape, I've spoken to Mr. Clark, and a letter from me or from Ms. Rubano as to what the board did will suffice for the purposes of the governing body.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bayer. That's, that would be appropriate, I think, under the circumstances.
Yeah, because there's a lot to add.
Much appreciated.
Fair point. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Hey, you will, you will, you will look back on these things over time and you'll say, wow.
Oh, yes.
I'm just looking, Mr. Chair.
Knock the next one out quick. I think that's going to be a quick one, right?
Okay. Okay, we're going to hear the next application, which is case number BA 2403, Third Avenue Associates. This is a use variance and preliminary and final major site plan. Application of Third Avenue Associates, Inc. as applicant and United Fellowship Baptist Church as owner seeking use variance and preliminary and final site major, final major site plan relief to develop the current vacant property into a cemetery on President's known as Block 219, Lot 13, Adelphia Farmingdale Road. Expiration, July 11th, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I, my, the Yeshiva's application I thought was the next application to be heard. The agenda is yours to adjust, but.
We're going to hear that next, Mr. [inaudible].
Very fine, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Jackson on behalf of Third Avenue Associates.
John Jackson.
I'm here this evening with our engineer, Mr. Robert Siv, who's seated to my right. We have our planner, Christine Nazaro-Capone, who is seated behind me somewhere. And I'm also here with Mr. Arthur Schwartz. He is the member of Third Avenue Associates, as well as Heather Herzig, who has experience in operations of cemeteries. We're here tonight for an application for a site that's on Adelphia Farmingdale Road. It's a little over 10 acres, and we're looking for approximately 5,400 funeral spots, funeral plots. And we do require a use variance. My planner advises that there is nowhere in Howell that a cemetery is listed as a permitted use. And what's interesting in this case, as required by statute, an applicant must require the consent of the municipality by resolution, and as part of the package that we put before the board, the governing body of Howell Township, whereas after consideration of the mayor and township council and finding no objections to the development property as a licensed cemetery. So we're in that unusual circumstance. Well, while it's not enumerated as a permitted use, we have the specific approval and consent of the governing body who found that this is an appropriate location for this. So we're in a little bit of a strange territory, unusual territory, as it relates to the law of non-permitted uses. And one of the things as well that our planner is going to submit to the board, that a cemetery, particularly a religious ceremony, a religious cemetery, in her view, is an inherently beneficial use because it serves the common good. You're going to hear testimony from Mr. Schwartz and from Ms. Herzig that this is going to be a very low-impact operation. They anticipate having four cemeteries per week. And in addition to that, the number of people that go to the services, it's going to be a Jewish faith cemetery. The number of people that actually go to the burial is generally very low. They have religious requirements. We think that this is inherently beneficial also because of the specific needs of people of the Jewish faith. They don't get embalmed, they get buried in a pine box, they are buried at sunset on the day that they pass away. It is a very natural, we think, organic type of process. We're not proposing any lighting. We're not proposing really much of an impact at all. So with that overview, we're hopeful that the board will agree with the direction and finding of the governing body that this is an appropriate use. Thank you for allowing me the indulgence of that overview.
Mr. Jackson, can we just have all your professionals sworn in at one time?
Yes, sir.
Any other witnesses that you have?
I have the two witnesses, like I said, Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Herzig as well.
Okay, so can they come forward too, please?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and state your name, starting with Mr. Siv.
Robert Siv, S-A-V-E, Licensed Professional Engineer.
Arthur Schwartz. My office is Bullitt, Candlewood Commons, Howell, New Jersey.
Heather Shay Herzig, Pleasantville Monarch Cemetery in Franklin, Pennsylvania. S-H-A-Y hyphen H-E-R-Z-I-G.
And Christine Nazaro-Capone, Licensed Professional Planner, upon consulting room from Red Bank, New Jersey.
The witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bayer.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson.
With your permission, it's really a relatively simple site. It's, you know, outdoors, it's cemetery plots. We think everybody understands what that is. But with your permission, if I could have Mr. Siv give an overview of the engineering aspect, that the size, the dimensions, the bolts that we need. Thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Siv, you're a Licensed Engineer and Planner, but you're giving engineering today.
I'm a Licensed Professional Engineer, Professional Planner, State of New Jersey, testifying today as a Professional Engineer. I have over 29 years' experience in the engineering field, graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, have testified before this board.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Siv, with the chairman's permission, can you please give an overview of the application, the zone, the location, the acreage, the topography, and what we propose to do? Then we'll go into the layout and the configuration.
Sure. As previously indicated, the site is identified as Block 219, Tax Lot 13, is located along the southerly side of Adelphia Farmingdale Road, which is also known as County Route 524, just west of the township boundary with Farmingdale and was within the ARE2 zone. The site contains approximately 10 and 1/4 acres, has approximately 410 feet of frontage along Adelphia Farmingdale Road, and contains wetlands and associated buffers within the southeastern portion of the property. There's also the Marsh Bog Brook to the east of the property, and an associated stream buffer of 300 feet is applied to that stream and is included within the wetlands, the wetlands buffer area. So we respect all of our buffers. Now, this site does have a little bit of history to it, and in a little bit of an overview, in the 1980s, this site was approved for a concrete contractor's facility. A driveway was partially constructed and some drainage installed as part of that site plan, but it never got built past that point. And then in 2005, a five-lot residential subdivision was approved, but again, never got built. And then a third approval was granted in 2009 for a house of worship with a multipurpose building, which again was approved but never constructed. That house of worship was for 600 seats, approximately 32,000 square feet, and had about 220 parking stalls. Just giving you a little bit of history as to what was previously approved on this property, but as it stands today, is basically undeveloped and wooded. I'm sure everybody's pretty familiar with where this property is. Is there any questions as it relates to the existing conditions on this property? I'll move into the proposed. There is a rendering that we prepared. Excellent. That is it. I'm not sure what exhibit number that is.
Well, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, if we can mark our PowerPoint presentation.
The PowerPoint presentation's already marked as 814. This is 813.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So 813 is a color aerial exhibit of the site with the proposed improvements overlaid on top of an aerial. As Mr. Jackson indicated, the applicant is proposing to construct an approximately 5,500-plot cemetery. Site access would be from Adelphia Farmingdale Road in the same general location as the previously installed driveway. The 30-foot entrance driveway provides access to a 10-to-12-foot-wide one-way driveway. Adjacent to that one-way driveway is an 8-foot-wide parallel parking area, and circulation through the site would be in a counterclockwise one-way direction. So you come in on the top of the driveway, circulate through as the arrow indicates, and back out in a counterclockwise fashion. To mitigate the increase in stormwater runoff, three onsite stormwater management basins are proposed near the southerly property lines. Those are the brown-colored areas on that rendering. There are no buildings, mausoleums, or other structures proposed as part of this application. As such, there's no sanitary sewer or potable water services proposed for this facility. It is strictly just cemetery plots. And just as a plan update, our site plan did have a monument sign located in the front of the entrance driveway just to the north, and north is up on this aerial. The applicant is removing that sign from the application and is not having a monument sign. The only sign will be a small plaque that is on the column at the entrance gate to the facility, and the planner will get into a little more detail of that.
That eliminates variance?
That is correct. And just to give you some broad information, I'm not the cemetery expert, but just to kind of help with some of the engineering questions that we'll get to in Charlie's letter. The cemetery will be open from dawn to dusk. There will be a caretaker onsite on a scheduling basis and then available on call when he's not onsite. There's anticipated to be two to four funerals per week. They generally last about an hour. Generally, there's 15 to 20 cars associated with a funeral, and those usually happen in the hours of 10 and 4, which are generally your off-peak traffic hours. There is proposed the parallel parking stalls, and that equates to about 65 parking stalls on the site. So you can see, based on the driveway layout, its length from Adelphia Road into the site, and then providing the 65 parking stalls, there's ample room onsite to facilitate circulation throughout the site and provide.
Mr. Siv, and just an experience, I think most people have the same experience with the cemetery when people go to the burial site. Do people tend to just park along the curb along where the grave site is, where the burial is happening?
Correct, and that's why we provided that 8-foot-wide parallel parking area, and we've done it in a grass paver to help with infiltration and stormwater runoff.
So if cars are stopped there and somebody was visiting a grave, they'd still have enough room to pass around them and get by?
That's correct. There's still a 12, 10, 10 to 12-foot-wide driveway throughout the site. This has been reviewed by the fire official, and he has no objection to this layout.
Thank you. Please continue.
As I indicated, there is no sewer water, so there's no bathroom facilities at this site. And then the, it's the intention of the cemetery to hire a subcontractor to maintain the landscaping and provide a backhoe for any backhoe services that are needed. So that's just a real quick, brief overview. The cemetery expert will get into more of the details of it. I just wanted to mention those items so that when we go through Charlie's letter, assuming that's how the board wants to proceed, we kind of have that context in mind.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I'll just try to hit on the big one. So, you know, they said they need the D1 use variance because cemeteries are not permitted. We also cited a variance for their proposed fence height. I think it's like aluminum with a wrought iron look fence that's 50% open. It's in the front yard area, and I believe in a front yard setback where maximum height of four feet is required. They're asking for five feet. Along the frontage, there is a buffer requirement because there's residential properties across the street, so they have some grading, some fencing. They put on the record they're eliminating the site ID signs, so that eliminates that relief in the buffer area. The grading is in relation to providing access into the site with some of the grade change through the site. We talked about them eliminating the side variance. Design waivers. Sites with any kind of parking component are required to be lighted. They're not proposing any lighting. We'll hear about their hours of operation and, you know, the need or lack thereof for the lighting. The parking aisle width and also for the circulation aisle width. On non-residential applications, typically commercial applications, 30-foot is required circulation for main site driveways. They do have the 30-foot into the site. It's just the balance throughout the site where they have the one-way drive aisle. I think the balance of the site is 12-foot with a 8-foot parking aisle, or parking, we'll call it an aisle because there's not actually striped spaces next to it. It does choke up as you get to the rear of the site where they do the turn to come back out of the site. I think, Mr. Siv, there, that's where it narrows to 10 feet?
That's where it's 10 feet. That's correct. It's just on the very back side of the driveway aisle.
So, and they did receive a memo from the fire bureau saying they didn't have an issue with the proposed use, and, you know, being that there's no structures on the site and, you know, parking, it's not like permanent parking for a retail facility or something like that. It's just when the services are occurring. They didn't take issue with that. And I just want to point out too, right, you know, these boxes that are on the plan, those aren't structures. Those are actual, the plots for the different grave sites. So that's all below grassed area. I don't want that to come off like that's a structure. That's all below ground. You know, as people and services happen, that's going to be restored to grass, and it's really not going to have a visual impact. The other two waivers are, they need a waiver for not providing any sidewalk and curbing along the frontage. Adelphia Farmingdale Road, I believe, is a county road, so it's their jurisdiction, but still we have required it on our site plan application, subject to concurrence with the county.
Charlie, can I just mention one quick thing?
Yeah.
We are proposing curb along the county road. We are not proposing or showing sidewalk. We'll leave it up to the board. Part of the reason and necessity for the variance for the buffer intrusion is it's a pretty steep slope along the edge of pavement from Adelphia Road into the site. So as we widened the road, or the county requirements, we then had to grade back up to the existing grade, which is what caused the grading into that area. So my only point of all of that is, is if we provide the sidewalk, which we're willing to do, it'll just obviously cause that grading to go farther into the site because it is a fairly steep slope in that location already.
So I'll defer to the board planner on that, but, you know, if the board is amenable to granting the relief, then it's contingent on making contribution to the sidewalk fund. And I would just say, if the board does grant that relief, allows them to make the contribution, I don't take issue with them providing, you know, relief from providing private sidewalk to the right of way because I don't foresee anyone walking to the site for this type of activity. And then, Mr. Siv, you reviewed my review letter, and you're confident you can address any outstanding stormwater management items of concern?
Yes.
And that. And then I just want to say, so there's no striped parking spaces, right? So you can accommodate, let's say, up to, I think it was 56 feet, or whatever it happened.
About 65 equivalent parking stalls.
So nothing's actually striped, which is not atypical for this type of operation. So, you know, as far as applicability of like EV charging laws and things like that, there's no formal parking spaces, so, you know, I would not take exception to the board not requiring that. And then you noted, Mr. Siv, right, there is wetlands, and I'll just come down to the aerial exhibit. So they're on your site plan here, right? So Marsh Bog Brook runs adjacent to Pennsylvania Railroad, and there's wetlands associated with that. There was an LOI when this was a prior application back in like 2004, but LOIs are only good for five years. What's the status of like amended LOI?
That's correct. We had an LOI when the original 2009 site plan occurred, and there was a 50-foot buffer established as part of that LOI. As Charlie indicated, it's expired. We have a new LOI application into the DEP. We expect the same 50-foot buffer, and the wetland line was redelineated and submitted, and it's pending.
Yeah, so in the event that the line or the buffer changed for any reason, right, you'd have to obviously amend the layout to make sure you comply or get any necessary permits as may be required for buffer averaging?
That is correct.
All right. From an engineering perspective, I think that's all I have. The rest would be maybe more operational questions for the.
Christine?
I think Charlie covered most of the variances and waivers that they need. I will say, in regards to sidewalks, you know, Jen certainly always encourages the sidewalk to be put in, but ultimately, that's up to the board's discretion.
Or contribution to the fund.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
All right.
Let me, yes. He did miss the waiver for contributing to the tree fund. I currently have it at 177,150 after we deduct for a couple trees that they're providing. And I did call out about street trees. They don't have any street trees currently proposed.
We have no objection to proposing the street trees, and the tree fund calculation is what it is. We acknowledge that.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Board members, any questions? Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. With your permission, if I could have Arthur Schwartz come forward and just give you a little overview of what his vision is for this, how he.
Yes.
Would you like to sit down?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce myself. I've been a resident of Lakewood for about 48 years. An attorney in Howell.
Let Mike closer so we can get him, please. Thank you.
I've been a resident of Lakewood for about 48 years, and I have an office, a law office practice in Howell, Candlewood Commons, and I've been there for about 35 years. I'm getting a little bit older, and I think that there is a need for a cemetery, a Jewish cemetery, in the, in the area. The population is growing, and we have an elderly population. And I'd like to, the plan here is to ultimately donate the plot to, to a Title 16 religious corporation that would operate the cemetery. It would be a Jewish cemetery.
I'm sorry, Arthur. Can you just explain to the board, one of the questions is what the rituals and customs are of faith, Jewish faith burials?
Absolutely.
That would bear on operations.
Most of the, most of the function of a burial in Jewish law is usually done at the funeral home, where they do something called a tara, where they purify the body, they wash it, they cleanse it. They then put it into a simple pine box with shrouds, linen shrouds. It's the most natural form of burial. Usually, at the chapel, there's a eulogy, and people say psalms, and there's a small ceremony. Then, most of the people attend the services at the chapel. Few people, close family, friends, close, close family, friends, relatives, come to the cemetery for a grave site burial. And in terms of that, you usually have very few people that attend. Maybe, maybe two dozen people will come in.
Is that presided over by a rabbi?
It usually is presided over by a rabbi because there is a ceremony. There's a procession that takes place. There's, they chant psalms at the time, and there's a burial procedure where they, where each one takes the shovel and puts a little bit of sand. where they, where each one takes the shovel and puts a little bit of sand into the coffin. They usually leave a stone on the place. But there are, there are Jewish customs that are adhered to in a Jewish cemetery. It's the most natural form of burial. There's no embalming, they don't put any chemicals in the body, and the box is a pine box, they don't have any metal or any other materials there. The shrouds are linen, they disintegrate. Again, it's the most natural form of burial. I've done a little research and I've consulted with other people in other Jewish cemeteries. There's never been a concern about any contamination, especially by Jewish standards, because there is no embalming, there's no chemical that seeps into the, seeps into the soil. It's, again, as I mentioned before, it's very natural. As I mentioned before, the, the service is usually a very limited service at the, at the cemetery site.
Let's talk about hours. What time of the day did the burials start?
The cemetery is proposed to be open six days a week except for the Sabbath and Jewish holidays. It would only be open during daylight time. We would have a custodian open the gate in the morning and close the gate in the evening. And there would be a custodian that would be available on call if any, if there was any special arrangements or people want to locate where their grave site is or there's any other, any other issue. Also, we would have a landscaper that would be an outsourced landscaper that would come in and take care of the, the, cutting the grass, opening and closing the graves and any other, and any other incidentals. There are no flowers in a Jewish cemetery. It's not a, it's not a festival or a happy occasion, it's a sad occasion, so Jewish custom does not have, does not have flowers or, or other adornments. There is no musleum, everything is in-ground burial.
How deep, six feet?
Standard is, standard is six feet.
And there's no stacking of bodies, right? One per plot?
No.
Now, how long does the grave side service typically last?
Usually less, less than an hour.
So you don't propose lights because you'll never be there in the dark?
That's, that's correct. Generally, Jewish cemeteries do not operate at night, burials don't take place at night. It's during daylight time and that's when the cemetery would be open.
This is very sad, but is there a section of this proposed cemetery allocated to children? And how are children defined? Like what is that demographic?
There is, excuse me, there is a small section set aside for children. When I say children, we're generally talking about babies that die within the first month and it's an unfortunate tragedy to have that type of situation, but they usually don't have a full-size grave, they're usually put in a smaller, smaller grave at a, at a Jewish cemetery.
So you're doing this after your career in law as your means of giving back?
Yes, I would like to dedicate my time towards this in the future. I expect that my office in Howell will operate as the, as the office to hold records and meetings that have to take place. Ultimately, ultimately, the cemetery does plan on purchasing a chapel where they would use it as the office, they would use it to have services there.
That would not be on the site?
That would not be on the site.
And that's customary? You go to the chapel and then from there you proceed to the grave site?
That is correct.
All right, is there anything else you'd like the, the board to know?
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with your whole thing with the cemetery with the Jewish faith, but do you have headstones or plaques?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and do family members do occasionally stop and during the course of afterwards to stop by at all?
Yes, yes, people do visit the site. There's tradition that usually on the 30th day after the, after the burial, people go, it's called the shloshim, people come down, family members, especially relatives, close relatives come down to visit the site. They usually put a little stone, a little pebble on the, on the grave headstone. They also come down, they also come down on, before the Jewish High Holidays to pray for the soul. And, and Mother's Day is a popular day also where a lot of people come down to the cemetery to visit their...
Okay, well, I see some similarities, so I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Any questions? Questions? Mr. Rasmussen? Okay.
Just one.
Yes.
You're not going to have bathrooms there?
The reason is, people have, people will be coming directly from the chapel if they have to use the facilities, they have the facilities at the chapel. It's a very, very short service at the grave site and it's there, we're not proposing any bathrooms.
With all due respect, you've never been to the cemetery with my sister Eileen.
Just one question. With any of the grave stones or anything like that, are there any like, just no like obelisks or anything like, like of significant height for, for markers or anything like that?
No, we're proposing approximately two foot high.
Three foot, okay.
Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. I have Heather Herzic here, she has expertise and knowledge in funeral practices in general, but I think Arthur has covered it, so considering your calendar, if I can go straight to our planner now and have Ms. Capone come forward?
That's fine.
I don't want to hear from her.
That's fine.
What's that called?
If you need anything, come here.
I don't need to snub you, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Going home, that's good.
But that, that testimony is available if the planner or the professionals have any questions.
Oh, you were sworn already?
I was, yes.
You're ready, Christine.
Your credentials in 30 seconds or less?
Licensed professional planner, I've been here many times, tested by hundreds of boards. Thank you, Chairman.
And Mr. Chairman, Ms. Capone typically has an outline and she gives her testimony in narrative form with your permission, can we proceed in that manner?
Christine, we're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. So, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. The reason we're here this evening, as was indicated, is because we are proposing a cemetery which is not in as of right use in any of the zones here in Howell, so we need to seek a use variance. So I think that the use variance can be justified under the inherently beneficial use. This is one of those uses kind of like an adult daycare that's not statutorily recognized as an inherently beneficial use, but certainly has been recognized as an inherently beneficial use. And why that is, is because it inherently promotes the general welfare. So it would certainly satisfy the burden of proof with respect to particular suitability. If the board weren't so convinced, I think you could also consider the fact of where this property is. It's not far from a, from a train track, there are no reasons why this site, in 10, a little over 10 acres and in the irregular shape that it is, couldn't certainly accommodate this very low intensity use. In the ARE2 zone, as of right or conditionally, you would be allowed to have a house of worship here. So when you look at the conditional use standards for a house of worship, there are about seven of them, which would be far more intensive than what the applicant is proposing. So as far as the site being suitable, I see no issues with respect to that. And again, if it were an inherently beneficial use, it would presumptively satisfy the positive criteria as well as the particular suitability proof. But of course, I think, again, if you, if you were going through a straight Medici analysis, you could certainly look at Criteria A, which talks about promoting the general welfare, as well as Criteria G, which talks about having sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. At 10 and a half acres or just over 10 acres, there's certainly enough room to accommodate the site. As far as the negative criteria, one of the things in New Jersey, you're required to have governing body approval if you're going to propose a new cemetery. And we did seek such approval that was recognized by a resolution adopted by the governing body here in Howell. I believe it was done last year, that resolution was approved. And right in that resolution of approval, the governing body recognized that they saw no detriment, find no objection to the development of the property for a cemetery. So when you're looking at the negative criteria, the land use law does not ask you to hold any other applicant, any applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriments. And as was recognized by the governing body, this is a very low intensity use that can certainly be developed here with no objection. And when you look at, again, the ARE2 zone, like I said, it conditionally allows a number of, of uses that are somewhat more, not somewhat, but more intense. The other thing I could say to the board is from a planning point of view, I think you could recognize a cemetery that is sometimes accessory to a house of worship or to a religious organization, which would be allowed here conditionally. So I think when you're evaluating the impact on the zone plan, that that's an important consideration, that while a cemetery, a cemetery is not enumerated as a permitted use in any zone. So we, we know there's one right down the street from here, right? The Evergreen Cemetery is not far from here. So despite it not being allowed in the zone, we have one right in this immediate neighborhood. And I do think that this is a beneficial use that meets its burden of proof. I think with respects to the waivers, they were outlined by our site engineer, they were also identified by Charlie and Christine. You're a professional engineer and planner, and I think that when you look at the relief that's required, it really is the minimum relief required to develop the site and it does so in such an efficient way, right? With a 10, a little over 10 acres, could we have greater access aisles? Could we have larger parking spaces? We could, but then you're adding more impervious surface on this site and really not achieving any real great planning goal of that. So I think that the, the plan that you have before you, right, we could put lights here, but we don't need to do that. You've heard the testimony from the applicant that there will be a caretaker on here on site when the, the site is functioning and that they do not operate during, you know, the hours that would be outside of daylight. So there's really no need for lighting. So I, I think to me, that, that certainly sets up for a better zoning alternative and to meet the intent of the ordinance with respect to those standards. So I think we meet our statutory burden of proof. I think this is a, a very benign use that will allow for, for residents to, to, you know, observe their face during the burial process in a location that, like I said, was contemplated for a house of worship and other similar uses.
In terms of impact on the neighborhood, how does this use, you know, compare with other types of uses that might be permitted here?
Well, it would certainly be a lot less intense, right? You heard the direct testimony that they'll, starting out, they're going to have maybe four, four burials a week, which of course, you know, it will at some point get to a point where it's larger than that, but this is a zone that allows for a house of worship, which would have much more traffic associated with it.
Christine?
I agree with Ms. Capone's testimony. I will say, Mr. Siv earlier talked about some of the previous approvals on this site and a cemetery is certainly a much lower intensity use than some of the other uses that this site has been given approval for. And I do think the fact that the governing body, you know, already has that resolution of consent for this site shows that it has some particular suitability for these.
Thank you. Emery?
I think my only question which I ask, I've asked this many times with other applicants in similar circumstances, in terms of any traffic, any sort of traffic, police, et cetera, is there any, is there any plan for that during the funerals?
I've discussed that with my client and there, there is not. We think with 12 people, 12 cars come, that that is relatively low impact. However, once in a great while, if there was someone of prominence and there were a lot of people, then that would have to be managed. Generally, the people managing the funeral know that and they'll make arrangements with law enforcement to have, you know, we've all seen the long funeral processions, like if a police officer or some fireman, they could, so, you know, that, that's a common sense thing that would be managed in the rare circumstance on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Over here?
Just had one question for Sheri. We're looking at the outline of this, this is like a winter view from above. So you, you think there's sufficient woodlands that would have no bearing on the neighborhood that I see to the west of that?
For, for, you're talking about the buffer?
Yes.
I, you know, I, I don't know because I haven't been, you know, to the site cleared and we thought we could add, you know, that could be something considered if it's necessary. You know, they could put a note on the plan, you know, if, if it's, you know, if it seems necessary after clearing, you know, to provide some sort of plantings, you know, in open gaps?
That go into our $177,000 budget?
That would reduce that.
Yeah.
At $400 a tree.
So there's a substantial budget for it.
So we could, you know, we could do something like that and deduct...
I think that would be good. I mean, you're right, you're not going to know till after everything's cleared, so maybe, and then that way it's not going to make any...
So a condition upon approval, would the applicant be willing?
Yes.
Okay. Kelly?
Yes, so the only comments that I'll make is, you see on their exhibit there, right, so they're residential all around, so they're providing the 50-foot residential buffer around and they're proposing to maintain the, the existing vegetation that's there. And I just, with the, there's talk about, you know, if they've made the aisles wider, additional impervious coverage or anything like that, I think certainly doing the bare minimum of what's required to satisfy the fire official, anytime we can reduce impervious cover runoff is a good thing. And I'll just say that the site aisle is all curved around the perimeter, which then captures into a drainage system, goes all the basin, so, you know, anything impervious is captured and goes into a stormwater management basin. And then the plots are grassed that also drain into the stormwater management system, so...
Thank you, Charlie. So, Mr. Jackson, we're going to open up the public.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
We got a motion in a second, all in favor? All right? Eileen, we're going to open the public.
At this point, the chairman has opened this hearing up for members of the, for members of the public. Anyone who wants to ask a question or make a comment, please come up to the podium, you'll be required to give your name and address and be sworn in.
Okay, we have someone that's going to take a little time, but we're going to have them coming up.
Good Lord.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you die? Please state your name for the record, spell your last. Stephen Meyer, M.E.I.E.R.
The witness is sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, congratulations on getting the chair, Paul.
Oh, thank you, sir.
I'm going to keep this as short as possible. I'm the adjacent property owner, I'm directly across the street. I, my neighbors are all on wells. Our big concern, due to the fact that there are no vaults involved with this type of burial. The breakdown of the body does produce certain chemicals. I'm very familiar with the movement of water through the soils there. I just finished an addition on my house where I saw the exact type of soils we're dealing with. And our concern is with our wells. And we need some type of an assurance that we're not going to have two years down the road start getting contamination in the wells. This is one reasons why cemeteries were never located in residential areas. Residential areas always followed the cemetery. But in most cases, when the houses were built, they were built on water and sewer, so it was never an issue. With us, this is a very serious health issue. I have a grandson living in the house at two years old who I'm concerned with what he drinks. So...
I'm sorry, sir.
We lost you.
Yeah, sorry, I was asking a question.
Natalie, what is your position on this? You're the...
I'm the attorney for the applicant. My name is John Jackson.
Can I get someone, one of the applicants up who can answer? Or someone who can answer my questions?
About the burial and the water?
The concerns with the water.
Mr. Schwartz, you want to come on?
Mr. Schwartz, you have to use the mic, please.
You have to speak to the board, Mr. Schwartz, not, if you can.
Might be better if you sit down and, or if you hold that, if you pick that up, you could stand if you prefer.
It's okay. Again, I've done...
His name is Mayor Levine, who operates the cemetery, is on behalf of the Jewish Federation. And I asked him the concern, is there any issue of contamination of water? He said absolutely none. He says Jewish, all Jewish cemeteries have natural burials, and there is absolutely no concern about contamination of water. Again, as I mentioned before, there's no embalming here. And if there is a, if there ever is a concern, it's when they put chemicals in the body. Here, to the contrary, the body is washed and cleansed before it's put into the wooden casket with the shrouds. It's the most natural way. I mean, animals die on the field. It's always been like that. You can't have a, this is the most, this is the, this is the best of, the best of everything in terms of burial, in terms of contamination. I don't believe there's any contamination whatsoever, at least that's the, that's been.
I don't agree with you on that. The cleansing of the body is, my wife is Jewish, so I've been through too many burials. The cleansing of the body is external. What is in the body remains. What breaks down and liquefies in the body eventually goes into the soil and gets washed out. That's where our concern is, is when these, the remains, try and keep this as ungraphic as possible. But when the remains decompose, they get washed down, they go through the water cycle. And with this, you have the wells that are close by. You also have Marshbald Brook, which is a C1 stream, watershed. Anything that washes through the soil, through the water, or the water that washes through the soil through this site is going to end up into Marshbald Brook, being carried down into the water intakes at Hospital Road. That's only about six miles. So basically, the water reaches there within about two hours. So it's not just what my neighbors and I'll be drinking is what you're going to be drinking. So I think we'd like to see some type of either monitoring, at the very least, some assurance. Myself, I don't have really a problem with a cemetery. It's one of the few times, Jennifer, it's going to be one of the few times I agree with you, it's one of the least intensive uses. But I think my neighbors and I really need some type of assurances that we're not going to have problems down the road.
So, Charlie, what do we do here with regards to Monmouth County Board of Health and this type of application running up against well water?
So obviously, as the board knows, anytime an application gets filed to the board, the plans and stormwater reports and all that stuff get circulated to Monmouth County Board of Health for comment. They issued, I believe, a memo on January 24, 2024, saying regarding the use variance and preliminary final site, major site plan application, no buildings are proposed, no sanitary sewer or portable water connection is proposed. If an irrigation well is proposed in the future, an application must be submitted to this department for a pool product installation. So they didn't issue any concern with, you know, the proposed use in relation to, and they are the ones who govern septic systems and wells throughout, you know, obviously the county of Monmouth, so. And that's typically an outside agency approval as a condition of any approval, so they didn't see an issue with the application, from what I can see.
What would you like to see, Mr. Meyer? Annual testing?
That'd be, that'd be good. At least this way, we know if we have a problem.
We could, Mr. Siv indicated to me that we could provide a monitoring well.
A monitoring well, yes.
What would be the depth of the well? Be able to catch the flow coming off the side?
I don't know. That would be up to the engineers.
What would be the depth of a monitoring well, Charlie?
To be honest with you, I have no idea. It depends on the soil conditions and, you know, depth of soil, restricted layers and things like that. I'm sure it's something that Mr. Siv can propose for our review, and we can, as a condition of approval, determine if it's acceptable for monitoring purposes.
Okay. And then how often are we monitoring?
You had proposed annual samples, that would work.
I could live with annual myself.
Okay.
My neighbors will go more into, they've got quite a bit of paperwork on the breakdown of the bodies. I really, when I saw the application, was not really going to come here until I saw that. And then, once we're starting to talk about water quality in my well, then I've got to act on it.
Got it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, just one quick question. Are you having monuments, or is this a flush-to-the-ground monument?
There will be small monuments, headstones, approximately two feet high.
Two foot, okay. Just wanted to know what I was going to be looking at. Thank you.
Anyone else in public?
Hi.
Do you swear the testimony I give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record, spell your last and your address, please.
My name is Jeff Buck, B-U-C-K, and I live at 74 Vander Veer Road in Howell. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. For probably about the past 28 years, I was really good friends with a fellow that lives, if you look at the map, on the top of the small point, the lower point, that house right there. He passed away a year ago, so. But anyway, I know the property very well, because I've walked it plenty times. There's a path that goes from that, that property straight down to the railroad tracks. And then you can walk along the tracks and go into the town of Farmingdale. What you don't see on the map is how much of a grade that that property is. From the house there, it's a very steep hill going down to where the railroad tracks are. That land is very wet. When it rains, that ground gets saturated. Probably you could dig a couple of feet down before you hit water for a few, for a few days. What happens is the saturation in that ground, for a few days after it rains, the ground appears dry, but down by the railroad tracks, it stays wet. That ground perks water out at the railroad track at its lowest point for days. So, I mean, the rotting bodies in the ground, there are toxins, you can look it up, coming from rotting bodies, Google it. I think that might be a big issue, that that groundwater, that water in that area, in that soil, comes up to ground level at the tracks. So that's all I wanted to bring up. Other than that, I mean, it's, it'll be a quiet place, you know? Can't argue with it for being a neighbor, but I think that's a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in public?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name for the record, spell your last and your address, please.
Richard Buck, B-U-C-K, and I live at 57 Adolphia Road, which would be right next to the cemetery. And cemeteries I really don't have a problem with either, but I am concerned about the water contamination. I went on the internet and I did a little bit of research, and from the Journal of Water and Health, 2015, may I read just a little bit of this?
Go ahead.
The abstract. "In the process of decomposition of the human body, 0.4 to 0.6 liters of leach is produced per 1 kg of body weight. The leach contains pathogenic bacteria and viruses that may contaminate the groundwater and cause disease when it is used for drinking. So far, this topic has been investigated in several regions of the world, mainly Brazil, Australia, Republic of South America, or South Africa, Portugal, and United Kingdom and Poland. However, recently, more and more attention has been focused on this issue. The study reviews the results and investigations relating to the impact on cemeteries and groundwater bacteriology and virology. The topic was mainly discussed in the context of the quantities and called changes in types of microorganisms causing groundwater contaminations. In some cases, these changes were related to the environmental setting of the place where cemetery was located. The review is completed by a list of recommendations, and their information aims to protect the local environment. Employees of funeral homes and residents living in the vicinity of cemeteries in this forum review aims to familiarize reader the results of the topic and provide practical guidance to decision-makers in the context of expansion and management of the cemeteries as well as the location of nuance." There's an article on it here, looks like I could get you all copies of it. It tells you the percentages of all the different things that leaks from your bodies. And I just want to say also that when it does rain, and we get a heavy rain, I'm right next to it, the water comes up through my, the water table comes really up. It comes through our basement, comes back through my neighbor's basement, she still has water in her basement. My sump pump runs for weeks, and those bodies, I think, are going to be underwater. And I don't know if that's really a good thing, if it's going to be leaching into my aquifer of my well. And if it does get into the well, I have no way of getting city water, you know, or any way to rectify it. So I really don't know what to do. I'm really nervous about this whole situation. So, you know, I don't mind cemeteries, but I'm worried about that.
Do you have, care to answer?
As far as I know, the DEP does not have any issue with cemeteries. I've never heard in New Jersey of a cemetery causing contamination. It's, you know, we're the regulated state. If there's any, you know, you just never see monitoring wells around them, it's just not an issue. I don't know the legitimacy of this study, but I do know that we are a very highly regulated state. The Monmouth County Board of Health is okay with this, and, you know, wells are at certain depths. We don't believe it's an issue.
Well, one thing I'm concerned is, if it was a regular embalmed person and a sealed casket and a vault, I wouldn't probably be so concerned. But these bodies are going to decay and leak, leach into the, that's, that's where it's at. So.
Thank you, Mr. Buck.
I guess that's all I have to say.
Mr. Buck, do you have a copy of what you read?
I gotta make copies. I was just going to read this, but can I make copies or give them to somebody somehow?
If you want to drop one off tomorrow to my office, I'm Dana Community Development, just so we'll have it in the record.
I will, I'll make, how many copies would you like?
Just one is fine, and then I'll forward one to Mr. Jackson.
You want me to give you this?
If you don't need it, sure.
I think I have enough.
Thank you. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes. With your permission.
One second, one second. We have someone else from public?
I think there's actually a couple more. Good evening, everybody.
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
State your name for the record, spell your last with your address, please.
Thomas Klein, K-L-E-I-N. I live at 20 Boyslane. So if you look at the map that's up on the screen, at the tip is where my neighbor's house is, she's at 10. The next house down, yep, that one, that's where my kids play. So I did want to bring up a couple of talking points here, and I just want to say, thank you again, this board is always gracious to our residents, and you did help us out with our approvals, so we really appreciate it. You had some of your witnesses here, and I just wanted to, because they were stating that there's no ill effect from these decaying bodies, and that's what they're stating, correct?
Correct.
So are they doctors?
You heard their credentials.
Do they work in the medical field? Do they have anything to do with the actual decay of a body or anything that studies bodies in decay? I don't think so. So I think that we should really look into this before we say an approval for this. Couple talking points here, you know, the water is the biggest issue, you're going to keep hearing about that from everybody, and I'm not going to be a broken horse and get back into it. I will tell you right now, a nine-year-old and a four-year-old, I don't want them drinking it if it does get into our drinking water. I do not know if it will. I don't have any issue with cemeteries at all, but that's one big thing. The other thing that I have, right, is you guys were talking about having four to six funerals there a week, and that was going to increase, I thought you were stating, as time goes on. So just doing a simple math, if you said there's roughly 20 cars, four to six a week, let's be beneficial to us, that's 120 cars pretty much every single week. And then after a couple 30 days, someone comes back to the site to visit, so we can pretty much guarantee that there's going to be traffic throughout the entire cemetery, pretty much on and off from sunrise to sunset, if that's what I'm getting from the testimony that you guys gave. I think this is a real traffic issue, and I think we already have a traffic issue where we are. You know, right up the road, as we were stating, there's already, you know, a development going in, a shopping strip going in, and they had to, you know, widen the roads and put a left-turn lane in. I think that you're going to see more than 120 cars a week in that cemetery, and I think that that's going to really become an issue with the traffic, especially when it comes to, you know, backing up on that road. So I know, just from living there, it's a very tough turn to make if you're going left, and it's even harder if you're going right, because people don't think that you're going to turn there. Now, I understand with their driveway, it will probably be a little bit easier if people understand where they're going, but I've been hit there rear-ended, I've almost rear-ended people there myself. I almost even hit my own wife on the way home one day, so I do understand about the traffic there. One of the things I did want to talk about, though, the main thing was the groundwater. So everyone's already kind of stated with this, that that area is higher than us. It's actually from my property, if I'm standing at my front door, looking straight out to it, it's about eye level, I'm about 5'6", give or take on a good day, especially if I'm in cowboy boots, but realistically, it's probably about four feet higher than us. That water is going to flow downhill, right? We all know the old saying. So the reason that I have an issue with this is if you remove all of those trees, and the whole thing is wooded, and I get the buffer zones, but there's a lot of water that's taken up by that area in the forest over there. Obviously, if any development was going, we'd have this issue. When it rains heavy, like they said, our basements flood. I've had to replace my sump pump because it burnt out over the winter just because of the rain we had. I think that adding to that problem by clearing this much land is going to really create an issue, to the point where I think, and listen, the back of my property, which is also wetlands, if we get a heavy rain, that's got six to eight inches of water on it, just from that. Now you're going to add this into it, I think that I'm going to have damage and flooding inside my actual house.
Charlie, stormwater management.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, it's really on the applicant to demonstrate that there's not going to be any adverse impacts. What I can tell you is, any application that comes before the board, they're required to comply with the Township Stormwater Control Ordinance. That's also in accordance with the state regulations, Stormwater Management Rules, NJAC 7, semi-colon 8. Anytime you clear a site, you know, you have to do modeling of the existing condition. If it's woods, there's a certain amount of runoff that's generated by that. Years, many, many years ago, the stormwater design allowed you to just basically show with your post-development that you were matching the pre-existing flows, and now is it. Under the rules, in 2004, the rules changed. Now there's required reductions, the two 10-year storm, you have to reduce peak flows and volume by 50, 75, to 50, 75, and 8% of the pre-developed flows. In addition, there's been recent amendments to stormwater rules, which requires enhanced standards to design for like increased rainfall intensities over time. You know, I'll let Mr. Siv provide some testimony. I had some comments in my review that still need to be addressed as a condition of the approval, but I think, you know, you know, the board has seen my review letters regarding stormwater management, and many times, it's, you know, a couple of review letters before the application actually gets to the board, and a lot of the times, it's because of stormwater management. So the impervious coverage they're proposing on the site, like I said, it's entirely curbed, and everything is directed to the stormwork event. If it's woods, there's a certain amount of runoff that's generated by that. Years, many, many years ago, the stormwater design allowed you to just basically show with your post-development that you were matching the pre-existing flows, and that was it. Under the rules, in 2004, the rules changed. Now there's required reductions, the two 10-year storm, you have to reduce peak flows and volume by 50, 75, to 50, 75, and 8% of the pre-developed flows. In addition, there's been recent amendments to stormwater rules, which requires enhanced standards to design for like increased rainfall intensities over time. You know, I'll let Mr. Siv provide some testimony. I had some comments in my review that still need to be addressed as a condition of the approval, but I think, you know, you know, the board has seen my review letters regarding stormwater management, and many times, it's, you know, a couple of review letters before the application actually gets to the board, and a lot of the times, it's because of stormwater management. So the impervious coverage you're proposing on the site, like I said, it's entirely curbed, and everything is directed to the stormwork event system, so that runoff is not going to be flowing off the site. They're going from woods to grass for where the plots are, but from the grading that's been presented, and Mr. Siv can provide some additional color to that, that largely is graded to the, either the stormwater conveyance within the parking area, or to like overland to the basins that are proposed with the development. I'll let Mr. Siv, you know, add some more if you would like, would like to.
Kalif is 100% right in what he said. We have done test pits out at this site. We have established where the groundwater is. We're above the groundwater for our stormwater management, and we are respecting the wetlands and wetlands buffer line that we have delineated, and we are complying with the new stormwater rules. As I indicated in the beginning of this testimony, there is a use variance approval out there for a house of worship, which has the very similar clearing and a lot more impervious coverage. So what we're proposing is actually less intense than what is currently approved on the property as a house of worship, as far as that variance goes. And we are meeting the new stormwater rules, and that's why we are where we are with three basins on this site. So everything should be draining from the, I'll call it the top of that rendering to the bottom of the rendering, away from your property, to the low point, which is the wetlands. And there is a slope from that direction to the railroad tracks. So our stormwater from our site will flow in a southerly direction away from your property. That's why we put the basins where we have them.
Okay. So a couple of my other things that I wanted to go over was obviously, you know, our zone is AREE two, you know, everyone knows the uses that are permitted under that. I had to go through the same thing like you guys are going through to get my approval so I could do what I'm doing on my house. I think that there's a reason that, you know, Howell does not have that variance in there for cemeteries. It's not just about the groundwater, I think in the drinking water, I think those are really important. It's also about our town and how it looks. And, you know, it's going to really hurt our property values, right? If I'm going out there and I look at my, I open my front door, and listen, guys, I'm not lying to you. I mean, my front door is right there, you can see it on the map. I'm going to open my front door, and I'm going to be looking at headstones. That's going to affect my property value negatively. No one can deny that in here. I've been a Realtor for White Realtors for 11 years. I don't want to go anywhere. I don't want to ever sell my house, but I'll tell you right now, it's looking like I'm probably going to have to, and that's going to be at a really much lower cost than I would like. The cost associated with staying, so if we do decide to stay after this proposed cemetery does get approval, or if you guys decide to grant approval for it, now I'm going to have to bring water in from the city. So if I'm bringing water in for the city, now I'm going to have to pay a really big cost for that. I think it's going to be somewhere around $100,000. I know when my friend tried to do it, it was 200 for him. He's got a little bit longer to go, but what he ended up doing was putting a well in because it was too expensive. So, you know, you start talking about this, and now you start looking at the negative effects that this is going to have. And I believe that, you know, we talked about before, the benefits. And I just want to know, who's benefiting? Are these only going to be Howell residents that are going to be buried in the cemetery? Or are they going to be from all over the place? Not that I care who it's going to be or where they're from, that has nothing to do with me, but, you know, it's not benefiting all residents, right? It's actually taking away from your residents in land values, in drinking water. I mean, you know, I'll tell you, I don't know who's going to pay for all of it, because I certainly won't be able to. And, you know, I just want to really stress, you know, when, when I said before to you guys a year ago, I said this too, and I'm going to try not to get emotional, but this is my dream. I moved here, we did our research, we looked, we went all over the place, we tried to find it, and I just happened to literally stumble upon this property, and I was able to purchase it. It was the greatest day of our lives, and we looked at the school systems, and the school systems were right, the land was right, you know, the privacy, we have a park-like setting, it's absolutely gorgeous. Our kids love it here, you know, and really, if we have to leave, we're outpriced in the market in New Jersey. So if we do have to leave, where are we going to go? We can't afford this property in today's marketplace, and I'm going to have to sell it just because I don't know what's going to happen in the future with this.
The applicant said they were going to provide buffering, correct?
Correct.
So I was under the assumption that buffering was going to be a chain-linked metal fence. I now see that, you know, where your outline is, that yellow line, the property line is 45 feet maybe, or 60 feet at most from my front door, and I don't see that there's going to be a lot of buffering. Are you guys going to go back? I heard we talked about making it a condition of the approval to go back and then fill in and do stuff like that. I think that's a really good idea and a really good start, because, you know, I-
Sharon?
Do you mind finishing that?
Yes, sorry, because I'm almost done, I promise, guys. You know, I just think it would be such a negative to this community if you lost my family, and what we are trying to create here is a generational home, and we want to be lifelong Howell residents. We are rebels through and through. My kid plays football, you know, we'd be devastated to have to leave. But the thing that really bothers me the most about this is who's supposed to protect us? Right? You know, one of the things that everyone said when we went through ours was, you know, you have to do this because of the people around you, so that they know what's going on, and they have a reason, a test to voice their opinion, and you can't ruin their views, right? You can't take away someone else's view because you want to put a second story on your house. Who's fighting for us? You know, and that's what you guys are here for, and that's why we love you guys, because you do the right thing so often. I mean, there's so many times, we were here that night, you did it three times in a row, it was amazing. Everyone walked out of here and smiled, as you guys were also smiling, it was a great night. And I don't want to take this away from you guys, it's not what I'm trying to do, it's everyone can have their own, and I think that is a very, very valuable mission that you have, sir. I think that cherishing our dead and taking care of them in the proper way and making that your life's work is very admirable, and I stand behind you in that. But I can't stand behind sitting here and losing my dream, which is already existing, for something that is proposed. And I'm not going to stop fighting. I'm not going to stop fighting against this. And I really do appreciate everyone's time here tonight. Thank you very much. I know that it was going to be done, but now I'm really done, I promise, guys. Thank you all very much. I'm not sure if there's anybody else that I think Crystal wants to give.
Not really up to yous. Hello?
Hi. Do you swear the testimony and give will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you God?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last name and give us your address.
Krista Regan, 10 Boyce Lane, R-E-G-A-N.
What was your first name again? I'm sorry.
Krista, K-R-I-S-T-A. And bear with me, I'm a really terrible public speaker, so I'm nervous too. I live at 10 Boyce Lane, and I have the same concerns about the water, the well water. My basement is, right now, like this spring, two feet worth of water. I am recently widowed, and in the middle of the night, I'm the one going down there in my boots, changing out the sump pump, taking care of it, and I had to, you know, obviously, same as the other neighbors, we're all underwater, had to install new sump pumps this year. So the decomposing bodies is very concerning. The, you know, some of the other concerns I have is the traffic. It seems it's so busy. This lot that I'm at is a family lot, and we've been there for years. It's been passed down, and the traffic that has, you know, come up since the more developments that are coming in is just getting, you can't really make a left anymore. I moved here to Howell because of the school system. I was in Island Heights, and you guys were able to provide, my son is on the spectrum, he's got an IEP. I don't expect him to probably be able to go out on his own. He'll be with me, probably for his adult life. And this was going to be our home forever. And I don't, you're saying it's going to be okay. I don't know how you're making that statement. And one of the other things I want to bring up is my living room will be looking at these sites. My son is so traumatized by losing his stepdad. We had to pull him from Howell, we did some homeschooling, he's in therapy. He is so traumatized by death, by losing his stepdad at such a young age tragically. I don't know if you guys have kids, but he didn't get up for Christmas this year, for two days, face down in bed crying. So my, my living room is going to be facing that. Right now, we have beautiful trees, park-like setting, we are all very friendly neighbors. It's, it's, now my son and I are going to be looking at that? He's, he's so traumatized by what has happened to him, and now I'm going to have to say, oh, okay, now you're going to look at, what was the number, 5,700 plots? Every day? It's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. It's unacceptable, and I am not going to stop fighting. We've been here first, it's residential, it should not be approved, and I don't care what you have there, it's not right, it's not fair. We cannot move to, like Tom said, where am I going and getting four acres with this interest rate now? And I have Jake set up for success in Howell schools. I, I moved from riverfront property because their school system was 106 kids, and they didn't have the funding, or they didn't want to put the funding. I came to Howell, and it was amazing. You guys took care of him, and I, I was given everything he needed, and we don't want to leave, we can't afford to leave. We were here first. We were here first. So, you know, I don't know what else to say, but I don't want to be waiting in my boots when the water's there. My water right now is still coming through. In this heat, there's still water coming through my wells, through the house, in the basement, to this day. I open the doors every day and I check it, and it's still bubbling through the walls. These bodies are going to be down there, they're going to be floating. I'm going to be stepping through that. What is that going to do to me? He's high-functioning, autistic, what is that going to do to him? Are there any studies that you're aware of that you know that this won't affect him? You do not know that. I don't want to look at headstones. I'm, I am traumatized by losing my person. My son should not have to, be not able to sit in the living room without looking at headstones. It's not right. It's, it's causing unnecessary stress on me. My son, and, you know, I think you guys really need to take this into consideration. This is residential property, and it should not be approved.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else from public?
Do you wish to close the public?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we close the public.
Public portion of this hearing has now been closed.
I have one more question.
It's, the public is closed.
Okay.
Chairman, so in response to some of those comments and questions, we do have responses to some of them. I don't know if you want to see additional expert testimony on this topic. I note that there is a State Board of Cemeteries that regulates this, we have a Department of Environmental Protection, Ocean County Board, I'm sorry, Monmouth County Board of Health. The governing body has approved this. I, you know, there wasn't one study read, but, you know-
I think we need more information.
Yes.
Yes, so-
Well, I spoke to my client about, you know, I don't, Ms. Caphone as well, to see whether there is an expert, someone, an engineer that has water quality and testing expertise. We'll have to come back with that and address that.
Okay, so-
With your permission.
Okay, so right now, your expiration date is July 11th, 2024. What do we need? Eileen?
Of course, we would give a waiver depending on what the next available date is.
Well, do you know how much time you would need to get somebody to get something together? Because right now, July 22nd has four applications scheduled, August 12th has three, August 26th has two, September 9th has two, September 23rd has one.
If we could do the August, what date did you say? Because we only have the, you know, the testimony about water contamination or lack thereof. So I don't think we take a lot of-
August 26th?
August 26th.
And then I just need an extension of time through the month of August?
We will, we will do that, I'll confirm it in writing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, and this is just a suggestion, you did hear public comment concerns about potential traffic generation from the site and how much that is on a weekly basis. Now, it might be who the applicant to maybe engage a professional and put some kind of statement together regarding, you know, jiving with the testimony that's presented about like weekly trips. As you heard, there was other prior approvals for this site going back, one for residential site plan subdivision, one for a house of worship. I think I heard Mr. Siv talk about, you know, 225 parking spaces with that house of worship. I don't know what that type of use might be as far as a traffic generation. That might be something that might be of particular context for the board and their consideration of an application. Houses of worship are a conditional use in the AREE two zone. Obviously, there's conditions that have to be met, but that might be something of interest for the board.
Thank you, Mr. Kalif. I'll take that under advisement, I'll discuss that with my client, whether we should get a traffic control. Is there a Mr. Kano in the house?
Okay, so anyone that's here for case number VA 24-03, Third Avenue Associates. This application is being carried to August 26th with expiration date of 31 August 2024. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, have a good evening.
No further notice. No further notice.
Eight twenty-six.
Eileen, we're going to take five. Okay?
I might be in front of that this time.
The board will now take a five-minute recess, they'll be back at 9:38.
31 August 2024. Barillo, Cantor Hughes, Mertens Ryan, Scottson and Seiya are eligible voters, and Orozco U. also certified. Mr. Pape.
Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals and public, good evening, all. Kenneth Pape on behalf of Yeshivas Emek Hattora, your applicant. This is, as you've just identified, the second hearing in this matter. The first hearing was March 25th, 2024. And by way, a little bit of a background, we were before this board during the pandemic some, almost four years ago, with a request to expand the facilities on the property and to increase the school's capacity to educate boys. There was a request to have double the number of classrooms, and we came before you, we made that presentation, this board granted that approval, and since that time, our clients revisited their goals, and their goals are not to increase the size of the school's population. And you'll hear from Mr. Jack Mandelbaum, the philosophy behind that decision. And we're going to ask that this board consider granting, I'm not even going to call it an amended use variance, it's a use variance and site plan approval and a subdivision approval for the project as amended. One of our neighbors made land available to us, so part of what we're presenting is an increase in land. Second is that our clients have made the decision that they want to keep the number of boys who are there static. You'll hear there's four classes, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, and there's only one classroom for each of those grades, and there's only 28 boys in those classes. You'll hear that it's been that way for some 10 years. There are other schools in the greater Lakewood, Toms River, Howell, Jackson region that are educating boys, and they're increasing their class sizes up to 40 or more students. Our client has made the decision that the quality of the education is the goal, not the number of boys that are enrolled. You'll also hear, we, when we were here the last time, we talked about a dormitory being built in Lakewood. The dormitory was for graduate students, and we made a- The dormitory was for graduate students, and we made a commitment that there's no request for a dormitory on this property. There is a beautiful dormitory that is a couple blocks away in Lakewood. It is completely built, and it's where the graduate students are living. You'll hear that the graduate student class is approximately 55 to 65, and that we're prepared to fix that, that number of students. We also had some concern, you, you expressed some concern with the septic system information that we provided in March, and it was appropriate that you brought that to our attention. Our plans were not clear. Since the March meeting, our client has secured the approval for the onsite septic system. You'll hear that that approval is for 180 students, 180 students and 13 administration or teachers. The approval is in place. Its location is on the plans, and the four existing septic systems are also on the plans as to be removed. So we, our goal on that is to make crystal clear where we are with the septic system. The witnesses who have testified so far on this were limited to Louis Zogner when we were here in March. And there's a certain logic to starting with Louis, but with your permission, I'm going to ask that we not go to, directly to Louis. All of his testimony and all of these engineering points will be made beginning at quarter to 10:00. I, I don't want to use up the whole night with him. So with your permission, there are three witnesses that I'd like to present to you in sequence. Their sequence is important. The first is Jack Mandelbaum. You may recall, he is the spokesperson for the yeshiva, and he will take us through the operation in some detail, some historic references. I think that he'll, 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 he'll address well the, the, the goals of the school and the way they intend to carry out that, those goals. The second witness after Mr. Mandelbaum is Melissa Rubb. Melissa Rubb is an architect, and she's responsible for the design of the building. She has worked with your planner, Jennifer Beam, extensively, including recently confirming that the revisions that she made were acceptable to Ms. Beam. I'm hoping that we have an opportunity to present that testimony to you. And the third witness is a witness that came to New Jersey from Cincinnati. We have been working with Dan Lampke. Dan is a PE, but he has a specialty. He designs fire suppression systems for buildings. I wanted to present him to you, not to go into the details of what he has done. That's your fire marshal and your construction officials, but I wanted you to hear that we have a fire suppression system that has been designed as part of the plan. If we were able to get those three witnesses in this evening, I'd be most pleased. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, may we proceed in that sequence?
Please.
Thank you. And Mr. Mandelbaum, I would ask if you could join us?
Now, Mr. Mandelbaum was previously sworn in, not on, in March, but the previous.
Correct.
Right.
I would, I think we should swear him into the application.
Yes, please.
Do you, do you affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Jack Mandelbaum.
Mr. Mandelbaum is a consultant, a volunteer, a leader at the yeshiva, and is the spokesperson for the yeshiva before the board. With your, not qualifying him as an expert, telling you that he is the spokesperson for the yeshiva and authorized to speak on their behalf.
Okay.
And ask that you allow him to so testify.
So, so Jack, welcome back.
Thank you.
When we first heard you give us the concept and everything, you laid down, you know, pretty well and clear terms, you know, what was to take place? In March, there seemed to be a change to that, and it, it caught our, caught us off guard, you know, so to speak, because it wasn't nearly as clear and as concise as what you had presented to us in the preliminaries. So we ask that you come back and put the record straight here, please.
Thank you. Thank you for being so kind.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mandelbaum, I'm gonna ask if you could start with just a, a description of the school that is the vision of Rabbi Weinberger for this property?
Rabbi Weinberger has been running this yeshiva for the last, in this location for 13 years. He was in another, other location prior to that. One of the premier yeshivas in the community, which we heard earlier, the Lakewood and suburban communities of Lakewood, which is very sought after as a Orthodox Jewish high school. I can talk firsthand a little bit to it because I happen to run a very large elementary school in Lakewood, and everybody from our school wants to get into Rabbi Weinberger's school. And its level and its quality of education, and more than just the education, but the idea that he's creating a person, a productive human being in society with obviously the values of our religion, is front and center in his goal. And I think that's why, I'm sorry.
And so we're talking about the old Solomon Schachter Building, right? That's where he's currently, the rabbi's currently teaching, right?
Correct.
Yes, go ahead.
And I think that may explain partially why the reduction in, in the original dream of possibly doubling the size of the school as opposed to now, where he's trying to keep it the way it is and the way it's been for the last 13, 15 years, is because it's quality over quantity. In, in the high schools in Lakewood and in around Howell, Jackson, Toms River, like we heard earlier, there are none that I know of that have parallel classes on each grade level. Because you want to do what's best for that, your, your student body, and the larger you get, especially in today's society, the harder it is to maintain that quality. Rabbi Weinberger excels in that. The personal interaction, the personal relationship he has with the students and their families is unparalleled. And no pun intended, you can't do that with parallels.
Okay.
So having said that, that explains where he is. He's been successful, and like they say, you don't argue with success.
If I, couple, let's put some facts before the, before the board. Currently, there's ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, and there's one class in each of those years.
Correct, correct.
And currently, the cap on the number of students in each year is 28.
Yes.
On behalf of Rabbi Weinberger, on behalf of the yeshiva, is that a commitment that we're making that the class size, one class ninth, one class tenth, one class eleventh, and one class twelfth, and 28 students in each of those classes?
Yes, it is.
There's also graduate school, and if you could describe the graduate, what is the graduate school? And, and we've made a commitment to the board when we were here in March that there'd be 55 to 65 maximum students in graduate school. But I think it'd be worth sharing how the graduate school works, how long they're there, who are they?
Many of the boys that graduate 12th grade, which is a typical four-year high school program, as is anywhere in, in our country, will decide to stay on under Rabbi Weinberger's tutelage and continue their Judaic studies in the graduate school. Typically, they'll be there for two, two and a half years, mattering on how long they want to stay. That's why it's not necessarily exactly the same amount of students that will finish 12th grade over the two and a half year period, because not everybody continues, and some may leave a little bit earlier. But like Mr. Pape said, somewhere between 55, 60, 65, around there, you would typically have in that graduate class, which spans about a two and a half year period.
And those are students who are going to be living in the dormitory in Lakewood down the street?
Yes, they are.
I think everyone would benefit from, if you could do a day in the life of the undergraduate student, what time do they arrive? What time do they, what is their day like? What time do they leave? If you could do a day in the life, and then I'd also ask you to help me do, do the year, to go through the student's year.
The school is open for the high school students six days a week. They're home, they're not in the, in the school on the Saturday. They go home Friday afternoon, and they come back Sunday morning. That typical day starts at about 7:45 in the morning, and they're there throughout the day till about 8:45, 9:00, 9:30, depending on the grade level.
At night?
At night, yes, I'm, it's not an hour. It's a little bit more than an hour. Some people wish it was just that hour, but.
Yeah.
They keep them there all day. The graduate students start the same time in the day, but because they are walking distance to the dormitory, they'll typically be there till later at night, sometimes as late as 11:00 or so, and they walk back. Like I said, Mr. Pape said earlier, it's about a block away, just to probably, what is it, 600 feet or something like that, and they're at their dormitory, crossing no major roads.
And the, the, um, teaching, the, the teachers at the school, I've gone over this with you and with the rabbi. We, in, in a secular high school, we would have the teachers on campus for a full day. And if you could describe how the teaching is conducted at this school and how the instructors come and go during the day for specific classes, and then if you could give an approximate maximum number of teachers associated with the school?
The teachers there, the morning teachers are there for each class. There's one teacher primarily for each grade level. So you're talking about the four high school and the, and the graduate. That would be five, so to say, teachers, instructors, rabbis during that period. Then they leave, there are other ones that come. There are typically, it's, it's not a lot of people there at one time, but there's, there are always instructors there. And the success and part of the whole programming is that there's a lot of student-teacher interaction, and that's what is part of the motivation. That's what their whole study process is, that give and take in the classroom, in the instruction room, and whatever it may be. So you would say there's probably between five and six at a time there, but then they'll rotate. The afternoon people will come, the evening people will come, and probably in the evening is a little bit less than that. But we're never talking about, because of the typical high school experience, where there'll be 25 people there at one time.
Amongst the build, amongst the additions to the, the yeshiva's operation, there's some recreational facilities, and I had asked you, if you could explain the recreational needs of the boys, and also if you could speak to whether there's any recreational competition with other yeshivas, or if, so that there's a complete understanding of how the recreational facilities would be used.
Okay. The need for recreational facilities, I probably don't have to explain to this board. We all need recreational facilities, certainly a bunch of teenagers at that age, and their classroom environment is fairly rigorous, and it's, it's fairly lengthy, as you see by the name of the day, the time of the day. They need to run around, they need to let off steam, and what's being improved there is a proper gymnasium and outdoor areas and whatever else they have. To let off that steam is extremely important, and it will benefit them as people, them as humans, and them as students. As far as the inter-scholastic, inter, you know, school competition and games, that does not exist in our school system. They just play for the sake of playing, and they have fun, they enjoy. It's typically not extended periods of time. It could be a 15, 20-minute, half-hour break at most. They just do their thing, and they'll back into the classroom.
The, after you've completed this, your testimony to the board, we'll ask Melissa Rubb, the architect, to present the building, but if you could describe what types of enhancements will be incorporated into the building? Just describing it from your perspective. I know that we sat down with the architect and, and made a list of all the improvements that would be incorporated to the building. If you could take us through those?
I can't talk to the exact size of the current classrooms, but I will tell you that the new classrooms will be able to comfortably fit 28 boys. What is there now does not. I don't know if any of you ever visited the school, although it's run impeccably, and it's run beautifully. It's the old Solomon Schachter Day School, which I remember when that was operating, and it, it needs, it needs to be brought current. There's just the hallways, the, the doorways, everything about it is 1960s, or maybe, it may have been built in the end of the 50s even. I don't remember when it was built, but it's, it's just not to house 160, 180 boys. And they just need the room. And what it will do for them, it'll be a different learning experience. It'll be different, you know, you'll walk down the hall, and you won't necessarily bump into the person that's walking the other direction. That's really all that's going on. They're still creating a study hall, a proper study hall, a proper lunchroom, proper classrooms, some recreation areas, and they don't have that now.
So the, would it be a, a fair and accurate summary of the goal is to continue to provide this high level of education, to not expand the school's population, to make a commitment not to expand the school's student population, but to enhance the education experience of these boys by making improvements to the, the building and the campus?
Absolutely correct. And I would add to that, that I don't think, even though Rabbi Weinberger may have had a thought and a dream several years ago of expanding it, I don't think anybody with a gun to his head could convince him to do it today.
So, all with a little bit more on, on the day in the life? Boys have their meals here?
Yes.
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner?
Yes. Dinner for the graduate students. I think the high school, no, dinner for everyone, yes.
The bus transportation, we had previously made the statement that no one is, no parent is prohibited from bringing their child to school, but in no way is it encouraged, that the school has a bus transportation system, and that provides the transportation for all of the undergraduate boys.
Correct.
The graduate boys walk to school?
They, from the dormitory to the school, educational building.
And no one brings a car to the campus. No student, they're not allowed to bring a car to the campus. Previously, we had identified that there were special events that occurred. This was in the original presentation. We indicated that there was a grad, graduation ceremony, and we indicated that in addition to a graduation ceremony, there was an award ceremony. The policy of the school has changed. Those are done off-campus. They're done at the Eagle Golf Course, so they're not going to be here, and we can make that commitment to you. The only remaining special arrangement is parent-teacher night, and that is easily managed because it's 100% structured and scheduled. The other activities, which we have discussed with you, would not take place. We know that there is a very real concern that the school's population not increase. We have a septic system. We're gonna, we'll give you the permit that says 180 students and 13. We have a commitment that's been placed on the record that we're prepared to be bound to. In the spring, the students are selected. Many students apply, and 28 students are selected for the ninth grade. We are prepared in the spring to identify to you that that process is in place and to provide confirmation on an annual basis that the students that have enrolled are capped at 25, 28. We also are prepared, in fact, we would welcome, and I say this on behalf of the rabbi, all of the members of the school, we would welcome anytime you would like to visit the school for any purpose, including observing the size of classrooms, but we would welcome your coming to the school to see what's happening there. So the goal is to provide you with as many tools as we can to assure you that the student population is going to be capped at 28 per class, one class per grade level, and 55 to 65 graduate students. Mr. Mandelbaum, is there any, you had, I think it's worth repeating, it was interesting. We talked about the sidewalk connection from the Lakewood, the Lakewood Dormitory to the yeshiva, and we had indicated that how is it going to be maintained and be kept barrier-free? You had made certain remarks to the board, and I'd like you to share them again and tell them, has it carried out the way we expected it to?
It actually has. If any of you recall that, the question was, someone wrote up, what happens when it snows? How are they gonna get from here to there? And we said that it would become part of the routine of the students, that that would be a privilege for them to prepare the way for their fellows, their fellow friends to get there. And in fact, I confirmed with the rabbi that it does happen, and it did happen. fact, I confirmed with the rabbi that it does happen, and it did happen. And there was inclement weather, it was the boys that were out there, making sure that passage was clear and available for everybody. Very rewarding to hear.
Anything further? I think that you've described the school, the commitments of the rabbi, the purposes of the change. Is there anything further to share?
Just that, like I said, being in the, in the feeder business of this school, it's an unbelievable program the rabbi runs, unique among many, many schools, but still unique. And it'll mean a lot to have the boys in a proper environment, in a proper setting. And like I said earlier, I know the rabbi well. I'm on the other end of the, sometimes trying to get students in, get our graduates in, and when the number is the number, it's over. There's no discussion, even though I'm here tonight, it doesn't help, because he's very committed to the quality and the program that he has running. Thank you.
I have nothing further, Jack, but he is here to answer all of your questions.
Board members, anyone have questions? Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, for the students that are ninth to 12th grade, does their curriculum include the normal science and math and English literature?
Definitely math and reading, writing, science. I'd have to defer to, yes, science, yes.
Just out of curiosity, because it's a high school, right?
It's a regular high school.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Is there a part of the day for religious studies, a part of the day for secular studies?
Yes.
And that's, that's the program for ninth to 12th?
Ninth to 12th, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bean.
I do have a question.
Wait, wait, go ahead.
Thanks. The recreational facility, so I believe from your, from what I read, the old or building B is going to house the recreational facility and a gym. What type of recreational facilities at the recreation facility end, not the gym end, what are we, what are we doing? What kind of recreational facilities?
I know, other recreational facilities, ping pong table possibly, and some other, other light recreation like that.
Okay, because it's pretty, it's a pretty big area. So I was just wondering what we're going to be doing.
Melissa Rubb's going to come up and take us through room by room, and we won't let Jack leave, because he might have depth of answers.
Okay, so we're going to have somebody else?
Yeah, we'll put Melissa, the architect up.
The architect, okay, all right.
If that's acceptable.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mandelbaum has capped the number. It's consistent with the other testimony that needs to be put on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack, tonight, thank you. Okay.
10:30? 10:30, 10:45 maybe?
Melissa Rubb is going to rely on A13 and A14. I think that's how they're marked in.
Okay, yeah, A13, 14, Charles. Thank you. I'm sure there's plenty here.
Handouts? Oh, that's great, thank you. I would love a copy.
Thank you, Eileen.
So the applicant's, the next witness is Melissa Rubb. She is an architect here in the state of New Jersey, and responsible for the architectural plans that were submitted to the board. If we could have her sworn?
Will you swear or affirm the testimony I give will be the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can we have?
State your name for the record, spell your last and your credentials.
Melissa Rubb, last name R. U. B. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you put your credentials on the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Melissa Rubb. I'm a-
Melissa, I'm sorry, can you sit so we can pick you up on that mic? Thank you.
Is that better?
That's better, go ahead.
Great. Good evening. My name is Melissa Rubb. I'm a graduate of the City College School of Architecture, licensed in the state of New Jersey, and the drawings being presented tonight were prepared under my supervision. I've appeared before this board and other municipal boards throughout the state.
We'll accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your license is in good standing tonight?
It is.
Thank you. Thanks for permission for Ms. Rubb to testify. I'm going to ask if you could take us in a narrative through the design of these buildings, and if you, the board needs to hear about the exterior, the facade, and they need to hear about the rooms in each of the buildings. And they're also very interested in knowing how the buildings will be coordinated so that they'll be compatible with one another. I'm going to ask if you could do all of that in a narrative, and I'll try very hard not to interrupt you.
Very good. As previously described, there are two structures on the site, and we'll begin tonight's, tonight with the new construction building. If we can turn to page Z2 of the Architectural Set. Very good, thank you. We're proposing a two-story building with a split-level condition to coincide with the site, and to accommodate the separate but parallel high school and post-high school programs into respective building wings. Each wing is approximately 162 feet wide and 66 feet deep, for a total approximate building length of 217 feet by 195 feet. The building is 42,012 feet, a 36% reduction from the previous design. The building is entered at Level 1, which is the right-hand plan on the, on the sheet before you, where the main entry faces the parking lot to the north. This story houses the administrative functions of the school, like offices and a conference room that's right near the lobby. It also hosts the post-high school spaces, which is one classroom, a library, coatroom, and main study hall of 3,794 square feet. If we go down half a flight of stairs, then we'll be at the quasi-basement level, which are the school's main eating areas. Here we have a dining room, a teacher's dining room, coffee room, and an area for food preparation. If we can please go to the next sheet, page Z3. Upstairs on Level 1.5, which is the left-hand side plan, are the facilities for the high school. A student lounge, a coffee room, a coatroom, library, and bathrooms, as well as the high school's main study hall at 2852 square feet. Lastly, on Level 2, is the remainder of the high school functions, which are four classrooms, a computer lab, offices for school administration. Do we have the architectural renderings for the board to see in big? Okay, well, they're, they hand out before you is the, you know, is our elevation design. That's okay. We can also see them in black and white on the next sheet of the Architectural Set, so.
So for the record, Ms. Rubb has handed out colored 11 by 17 versions of the building elevation. I think we would want to have at least one of those marked into the record. Can we work from that?
Yeah, this is fine. That's all right, Eileen, thank you.
I think that's perfect.
Yeah, just the 3D view is great.
The last one more?
All right, if we, if we could go to the next sheet, that would be, that's, that's fine, yeah, that's some 3D images of the, the front is actually on page Z.
That's good.
That's good. Yep, yeah, the center image is kind of a front elevation from the parking lot. Great, thank you very much. At the elevation, we're proposing a mix of brick and stone, befitting of a, of a school architecture, with large windows for a bright and airy learning environment. An inviting entrance canopy with articulated water table trim and cornice are there to add visual interest and some texture to the design. We'll now go to the existing building. If I can trouble you to scroll down to the next sheet. Thank you very much. One up, if you don't mind.
What's the upper elevation?
Lower plan would be great. Thank you so much. We're proposing the, converting the existing building that currently houses the school into an accessory building for recreation. This will house additional offices, a student lounge, a recreation room, and a gymnasium. We're proposing lifting the roof of the western portion of the building to add additional height to the gym to ensure it be appropriate to play ball. At the exterior, if we can go to the elevation, please, thank you, we're renovating the exterior of the existing building to match the new construction by adding brick and stone accents, and to complement the, the main building, and to give the site a campus feel. That concludes my direct testimony. I would be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Charlie?
Sorry, is there something that you want to say?
Yes, I, the increase in height of the existing building to accommodate the playing of basketball, what portion of the building would the height be increased, what portion will not be increased, and to what height are you proposing that we go?
Sure. So we're, we're proposing only lifting the roof on the western portion above the gym and gym entry areas. The remainder of the building at the entry and recreation rooms would remain. We are lifting the roof a net, meaning after the roof is, is lifted and the, and the pitch is accounted for, it would be a net increase of 2 feet 8 inches to the, to the ridge of the roof. We're gaining that additional height on the interior there.
There was a question about recreation. There's a basketball court, and there's a recreation room. Mr. Mandelbaum opined that there could be ping pong and the like. How is that room designed? What types of facilities can be accommodated in that room?
Right. Mr. Mandelbaum was correct in that we designed the recreation room for relaxing and, you know, ping pong. I believe we have a pool table, you know, something like that, but, you know, low-key recreation and relaxation.
Are any showers provided, any, any of those facilities associated with the gym?
There are none.
And your professional opinion, none are needed?
None are needed, that is correct. Being that it's a pickup game, you know, half-an-hour break, we don't, you know.
If you could just go through a little, going back to the, the building where the undergraduates are educated, you counted the four classrooms for us?
Yes.
And identified that there's only four classrooms, but what were the other amenity rooms? If you just go through them a little, and then point out that, how they are used in conjunction with the boys' education?
Absolutely. So in the high school portion of the building, which is at the lobby up half a floor, and then up another half a floor, we have a student lounge in the building itself, a library, a computer lab, and then, as we described earlier, four classrooms. There is one main study hall at Level 1.5 at the end of the building, where, you know, the, the four classes could gather together on occasion.
And you indicated that the graduate students, there's a single classroom for the graduate students.
That's right.
Describe how that room, where it exists, and how it functions.
That's on the, on the ground floor level, Level 1. One post-high school classroom, and then most of the activity would be happening in the main study hall at the end of the building. If there was need for a break-off class, then that's where, that's how the classroom would be used.
So a study hall and a classroom for the graduate students is what's required for their-
And needed, yeah.
I don't have anything further of Ms. Rubb, oh, the colors of the materials that are proposed. If you could just take us through the textures of the building.
Absolutely. So we're proposing a reddish earth-tone brick, kind of a standard brick, and some limestone and stucco accents. We feel that this is very appropriate for this facility, and we know that it'll be a beautiful addition to the community.
There was a concern early on, Ms. Beam focused on the building having a flat roof, and I know that you've engaged in some discussions with her.
Yes.
You could describe why a flat roof is used for this type of a building?
Absolutely. So Ms. Beam and I discussed, you know, the appropriateness of a, of a gable roof on the structure, and she agreed that it wouldn't fit with the architecture. I also opined that for a school, having a flat roof is, you know, in line with, with the use, and we, we agreed that a flat roof would be acceptable, and-
So Ms. Beam can speak for herself, or Christine Bell can speak for her, but you had that discussion about the appropriateness of a flat roof for a school building?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, you know, I spoke to Jen about this, and we appreciate, you know, there's been significant revisions to the architectural plans from what was originally presented. It's a very attractive building, and in this instance, a flat roof is appropriate.
It reduces the height.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Now I have nothing further, Ms. Rubb.
Any questions for the architect?
No, you go ahead, but Nick. Okay, I have a few, so bear with me. I guess we saw the new building, your dining room, how big is the dining room? I got it at a little over 3,400 square feet. Is that, is that correct?
Bear with me, I have that.
And do all the students eat at the same time?
That's a good question, and operation, I'll refer that to operations, but we did intend for the dining room to be used both by high school and post-high school, and it could accommodate the full student body in terms of, you know, square footage. It's 3,572 square feet.
Okay, and what's, what's the occupancy load?
Let me grab that for you. For building code purposes alone, not for, you know, the intended use, the maximum occupancy for tables and chair setup would be 238 persons.
Okay, and the student body is about 180?
180, yeah.
So, so the space is much bigger than, than needed, correct?
Meaning, that's, building code calculates 15 square feet per person.
15 square feet, yeah.
So, you know, depending on how the room is set up, it could be, it's a spacious environment, but we think it's appropriate.
And do all the students eat at the same time?
I just got that from the rabbi. They don't, there's no rule about it, that sometimes there's a lot of people having lunch, and sometimes there's in smaller groups.
Okay. I see the, on the high, was the high school side, there's coffee, yeah, it's coffee room and a student lounge. What's, what's the need for both of those if we have such a big dining room?
Sure, so coffee room is, is again, meaning the students don't go down to the dining room at the beginning of the day, so morning prayers, they would go straight up to the coffee room, grab a quick coffee, or, you know, something like that, and then go into the main study hall for morning prayers. So the dining room is really used for form room, form omials. The coffee room is, you know-
And the student lounge?
Student lounge.
I mean, can't they be one and the same? I mean, why do we need both?
Again, I mean, we, we discussed this with our client, and the needs that they requested were for, you know, to have them separated for different uses throughout the day.
My, my point is, this is going to be a occurring thing with, for me, all right? You're, right now, you're at 12,408 square feet for the school. And I went up there, and I, and I met with the rabbis, and it is tight. I totally agree it's tight, and definitely need more elbow room. But we're going from 12,408, we're keeping the 12,408, we're adding 42,000 square feet of usable space. So we're quadrupling the usable space, but we're keeping the same amount of students. And I guess for me, that's a hang-up for me, because proportionately, if you're keeping the same amount of students, why do you have to go four times the amount of space?
So, again, as you saw on your visit, the, the current facility is severely undersized, and so-
Agreed.
Yeah, so, you know, the need for spacious classrooms, some lounge times, some recreation lounge area and recreation area was really, you know, the impetus for this project to begin with. So, you know, the, the school doesn't want to minimize that for themselves in, in, you know, this new building.
I very much appreciate the architect answering your questions. Rabbi Weinberger's also here, and he just indicated he'd like to speak to why he is making this commitment for the campus. So before, I'll, I'll bring him up, it was permission, I'll bring him up, and I'll ask the, I'll ask that you ask him the same question again, about why the building is being quadrupled in size.
Okay, and not being of Jewish faith, and I'm going to mispronounce this, I'm sure, Medrush? The Medrush?
That's right, Medrush, yeah.
Okay, and so, there'll be two of those, one for the postgraduate students and one for the high school students?
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And how big are those?
So, the postgraduate one is actually, in the event that both, both student bodies need to come together for any reason, for, let's say, a speaker comes, that room is 3,794 square feet.
That's the post-high school one?
That's the post-high school one.
3,000...
794. It's a double-height space, so it takes up both, you know, on the ground floor, so it's a full height. And the high school one is at level one and a half, 2,852 square feet.
Okay, and that's, and what are those rooms used for?
So, that's the primary Jewish study time, where, you know, groups of boys will come partner to partner, facing each other, and, you know, small and...
It's like peer...
Peer studies, sometimes, you know, a group of 10 will come together, that kind of thing, but that's where the main prayer and Jewish studies will happen.
And they come, and you said the post-high school and high school would intermingle...
On occasion.
On occasion.
Yeah, the room has been sized for that.
Okay. The original building, you're going to have, you're going to have a gym also, like, it looks just like an old basketball court, all right? It's just a basketball court?
Yeah.
I know it says gym, but it just, it looks like old basketball court.
That's right, yeah, that's the intention.
And, yeah, I mean, would that be used for other purposes?
Not, that's not intended, no.
Okay, so, I got that as, you got 5,300 square feet?
Yep, you got it, 5,358.
5,358, okay. I mean, it's just, again, it's a really big space. An official NBA basketball court is 4,700 square feet. So, you're bigger than a, than a, an NBA court, not a stadium, but court itself.
I understand, but with the sidelines and all that, I mean, I don't remember if we did regulation size here. I don't think we did, because it's only 49 wide, but...
Yeah, you're bigger than what regulation would have to be. The bleachers, I see there's bleachers on there. How many bleachers, what's the capacity, how many people can sit there?
Sure. It seems like a small amount of bleachers, maybe, you know, two, three levels and about, I would, I don't have a dimension, I would say about 20 feet across, so, just, you know, if your friend's having a pickup game and you want to watch on the side. Not meant for outside spectators to come in or anything like that.
No spectators would be, would be sitting there, right?
No, this is really for only use of the student body.
Okay. I think there's, there's office space, 783 square feet. It just says offices. In the new building, you have all your offices marked specifically for something, principal, system principal. What is this specifically going to be used for?
So, we left this office space kind of flexible, meaning, as the, as the needs of the school evolve, they're going to want to fit the space out furniture-wise, you know, how it seems fit with maybe administrative offices or more kind of the billing aspect of the, of the school. So, we left it flexible in that we didn't delineate exactly which faculty members would be in the space.
So, like, what, maybe like registrar-type?
That kind of thing. Perhaps certain, you know, of the rabbis or teachers would want to, you know, kind of a cubicle to do some work in, so we left it flexible.
Okay, and there's also a proposed student lounge, about, what's it, 906 square feet, but you have student lounges, or one student lounge in the, is there one student lounge in the new building?
That's correct, one student lounge, yeah, for high school.
Okay, and how big is that?
The student lounge in the new construction building?
Yes.
856 square feet, but that's in the high school wing specifically, so the student lounge would be more for the post-high school boys.
So, the one in the old building is going to be for the postgraduate students?
That's right.
Okay, that was my, that's what I was wondering. Storage, and your storage spaces, I mean, you got like, what, four of them between the two buildings?
Something like that.
And what are we, what are we storing? What is...
I mean, the school has various needs of, of storage. We, you know, we think it's an appropriate amount of storage. A lot of our clients actually come back and wish they put more storage in, so we built that in initially. If I may, we did an analysis of the, you know, of the previous plans, and we have a 66% reduction in the amount of storage that we're proposing, you know, in this, in this design, so we did minimize it somewhat.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now.
Any other board members?
I have a quick one, and I was just reminded, Mr. Pape, by looking at these, you know, these nice drawings, the people that were living, when you're looking at the property to the left last time, whenever that was, 2020, were worried about light spell from the classrooms. I think we were putting up some plantings and some window treatments. I assume that's transferring over to the...
That's, that's correct, yeah.
You removed windows as directed by Ms. Bean?
Pape, Ms. Bean.
And what was left of the windows, all are blackout facilities?
Mr. Pape is correct.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that was carrying over. I figured it was, but I just wanted to confirm.
It's even noted on the plan which windows are blacked out. It's kind of small, the lettering though, because there's a little, little letters right outside, black glass, I believe it says.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Chair, can I just ask a couple of questions? So, the existing building, is there a commitment from the applicant that there's not going to be any classroom space within that building?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, the food prep area in the high school, so, I know as far as septic, there's a difference between whether things are prepared off-site and then brought and then served versus actually making the food onsite with a full kitchen, everything like that. So, there's, is it a commitment that there's not going to be a full kitchen and all the waste that's just...
That is correct. It's warming facility only. All food is prepared off-site and brought to the facility to be warmed and distributed.
All right, that's all I have for the architect.
Okay, great.
I indicated that Rabbi Weinberger was here to answer the question, but I'm watching as we're getting closer to the end, and I very much would like to have you hear from the witness who flew in from Cincinnati today so that we can send him back. His testimony is brief. There may be a little room left on the other side of it. You'll let me know when we're back, Rabbi Weinberger, a certain feature.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan, you come up?
And this is fire suppression for both buildings, right?
Mr. Dan Lampke is a professional engineer. He's from Ohio, and he has an area of specialty in designing fire suppression systems, and that's what we're going to take you through this evening. If you could swear.
You swear the testimony and give it'll be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
Daniel Lampke, L-A-M-P-K-E.
Witness this morning.
Lampke, if you could take a moment to share with everyone here your profession and how long you have been in this profession?
Absolutely. So, I have, my background is I have graduated with a master's in fire protection engineering from Worcester Polytechnic Institute. I have been a professional engineer, registered in 10 states for approximately 15 years. My profession is in fire protection as a registered PE.
And it's my understanding that you have an application for reciprocity in New Jersey that's been pending for the past nine months of the past year, and that you're awaiting confirmation, but as of today, your firm is registered in New Jersey, you're registered in 10 states, the man who owns the company is registered in New Jersey, you performed everything under his supervision, but you're waiting for your license.
Correct. The owner of our company is a professional, fire protection professional engineer in New Jersey, and this was prepared under his responsible charge.
We'll accept his testimony.
That's very kind of you, thank you. Mr. Lampke, I'm not asking that you describe the system that you designed, I'm not asking that at all. I ask if you could confirm who ultimately reviews and approves the plans that you created, but if you could share with the board what it is that you designed, what you created, working with the architect for a fire suppression system for this new building?
Absolutely. Again, so ultimately, the final design will come down to the building and the fire subcode official for review and approval, but it was the intent of the client to make sure that the, the building was fully suppressed. It had sprinklers for life safety. So, the design that we have provided for, for the original planning board purposes for review by the client and continuation is to provide a, what's called a wet pipe sprinkler system, similar to what we have here throughout the facility. Every single room will be, have sprinklers per NFPA 13, which is the reference sprinkler standard in New Jersey. The sprinkler system has been designed for the most demanding condition, which in our case was a, was storage rooms or the, or the kitchen. It's not just for classrooms. And there'll be onsite water storage available to supply that sprinkler system for the, for the time required per the referenced NFPA 13 standard.
And you were brought in for that specific purpose, to design that system for the new school building?
Correct.
It should be noted that the existing building is not proposed to be fire suppressed. The existing building will be built to code but will not be fire suppressed. The new school building will have the full fire suppression system. What, and you're aware that this is a building will be serviced by onsite wells, and have you reached a comfort level that the system that you designed can be serviced by a well and does not need to be connected to a potable water source?
Correct. So, as I mentioned, we are planning for onsite water storage. It'll be in an underground tank drawn in from the side via, via a fire pump and boosted to the pressure necessary for the final system design. The well, the onsite water requires approximately 14,000 gallons. We call for 15 for a little bit extra, 15,000 gallons underground, and that will be refilled via the well. It needs approximately 25 GPM to refill it over eight hours, which is more than made up for the domestic system.
So, you're comfortable that the well system that's there is adequate for the system that you've designed?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I know it's somewhat unusual testimony, but it come up earlier, there was from your professionals concerns about the fire, the fire suppression system, and for that reason, we asked Mr. Lampke to come in and be available to present this to you.
So, when we're rehabbing the existing building, we're not going to put any fire suppression in there?
Going to be, the construction methodology will be to the satisfaction of the fire marshal, but there isn't a suppression system proposed?
Any questions? Nick?
The fire department can supply the system, right?
Yes, it can, so there's going to be, we, the final location is, of course, to the fire department and the fire subcode officials' approval, but there will be a means to refill via tanker truck if we need to. Also, there's be a means to pressurize the system.
Pressurize the system.
Via fire pump, via tanker, so two ways.
And how many Siamese's on the building?
The plan for one, but whatever the local needs.
What'd you say?
There's a plan for one Siamese, but what's whatever the, the building needs.
Okay.
So, it means and methods type thing when we, when you get into the final coordination on the suppression system.
Okay, thank you.
Does that tie into fire hydrants outside?
To my knowledge, there's no planned fire hydrants outside. That has been discussed and not required.
There's no potable water supply for a hydrant, so that we're creating a system to fight fires.
Good point.
Okay, nothing else? Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chair?
Chair, can I just, sorry, I apologize, a clarifying question. So, so the pump's underground, it's not inside the building underground, correct?
The, the tank is not inside the building, the pump is inside the building, and the pump room off of the mechanical room.
And you said the location of the tank isn't quite yet determined outside the building, where that's going to go?
Yeah, it's, the, conceptually is going to be, I guess, if you will, drawing north from the mechanical room as shown, right in that, right in that area, yeah.
Right in there, okay. So, the fire department would have access from the parking area to, if they need to supplement the water into the tanker or anything like that?
Yeah, the tank is planned for underground, so it's not going to be something above, but yes, there'll be, there'll be vents, there'll be refill points, and then there'll also be an FDC for the system as well. So, there'll be, FDC, a fire department connection.
And then, as you said, the existing building obviously isn't going to be fire suppressed. Is there any requirement by building code for that to be suppressed?
That was not part of my evaluation.
The building requires sprinklers?
The old?
No, the old one, no.
That's the question?
Sorry, I missed it.
So, the existing building is not, in your professional opinion, is not required to be suppressed, right? Okay, and that'll ultimately be reviewed at time of building permit, applications, all that kind of stuff? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Actually, I do have one more question. Is that standpipe or just sprinklers system?
Just sprinklers.
Okay. We'd like to hear from Rabbi Weiselberg, and then we'll call him.
Mr. Chairman, my only suggestion is, if there's anyone in the, I don't know if this gentleman's coming back.
Yeah, he's not coming back.
So, you may want to open to the public for this witness, if he's not coming back since he's from Ohio.
Okay, let's do it.
Make a motion.
We got a motion, we got a second?
Motion to open only to this witness.
Only to this witness, okay. Eileen?
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for questions of this witness only. If anybody has any questions, please come up to the podium, give your name and address, and you'll be sworn in.
All right, we got a motion to close. All in favor? Eileen, we're closing.
Public is now closed.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Rabbi, if you could join us?
Hope you enjoy New Jersey.
At 11 o'clock at night?
Good pizza here.
Please.
Andy?
Rabbi, do you affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell your last.
Yakov Weinberger, W-E-I-N-B-E-R-G-E-R.
Rabbi Weinberger, the question was why such an elaborate building, why quadrupling the size of the building? Would you like to respond?
I would like to, yes.
Please.
Just a little bit of the history. We purchased, we had the contract on this building, we had 27 students in the school at that time. We moved in, we had 45 students and three classes. The school was plenty, big enough for us, for all I needed at that point. The school grew till we have the, what the setup that we have now, four classes in the high school, and we've been static at this number. We don't fit. We have two study halls, there's not an inch of an aisle for a person to move tight, every, every inch. We have two dining, we have, now we have two separate dining rooms. Each dining room is basically a classroom. Doesn't fit the student population. The boys take their meals and they take it to their classrooms to eat. We have a gymnasium, that's the ping pong room that's going to be in the new building, in the old building, that's what it's going to be transformed into. It doesn't fit. We have one of the most popular schools in Lakewood. I remember Mandelbaum has spoken to that before. We have a very high level of academics. The boys are there from 7:45 in the morning, the ninth graders leave at nine o'clock, the ninth and 10th graders, the 11th and 12th graders leave at 9:45, and the post-high, postgraduate are there until 11:30 at night. They need space. The size of this building doesn't compare to this, for our student population, to any high school, in a public high school or anything, the size of a building. If you drive around Lakewood and you see the, the other high school buildings that there are, for the level of school that we're providing, our facilities are woefully inadequate. It's not a question of quadrupling. To make us fit, to have enough breathing room, we'd have to triple it. To quadruple it gives us the space that the boys should be able to have time, place to be able to eat in the dining room at ease, classrooms that are enough, large enough that there's not one desk against another one, it's, there's space in between. You came down, you saw it like, the dining room, the study halls, I just wanted to correct that, we gather together in the postgraduate high school every morning. The morning prayers is everyone together, that's when we have all together, the whole student population, 160 to 180 students are there together every morning, and then, anytime that there's a outside speaker, someone coming, a lecture, everyone gathers together. Otherwise, they have two separate study halls, each one does their own thing, and there's the two programs are running simultaneously, and the building fits for what we need.
I think that everyone would like, so, Jack Mandelbaum spoke for you, I spoke for you, Ms. Rub spoke for you, 28 students, four grades, 28 times four, graduate, 55 to 65 students, a commitment to Howell Township, to the zoning board, that is what you're asking, and that's what you're prepared to be bound to.
That's what we, that's what we're here for, and that's what we're going to stand up.
So, how is the selection process for new students?
It's very rigorous, like I say. The ninth graders, they come in, the eighth graders... The ninth graders, they come in, the eighth graders, those are Mandelbaum's students and from many other schools in Lakewood. We get recommendation from the schools, the ones who are up to level, to be able to be interviewed. We interview the students, it's a rigorous time, they prepare for it for months to be able to get, to do it. It's the prize, if someone can, you know, get to the level to be able to enter into the school.
So, so this facility is more like a gifted and talented?
It's not gifted and talented, that's not, that's my word for it. It's dedicated and, and developed, that's what it is. They don't have to be gifted, they don't have to be extremely bright, they have to be very dedicated to their studies, and they have to be doing well.
Any questions?
And, and I would just also add, we do live with the students. We, we give them all our time of day. Every student knows my office is open, any student can come in, from ninth grade through postgraduate, any time of day. Mrs. Morgan can attest to that, she's, has her children in the school. We have every day, there are boys coming in and out to my office, to our principal's office, to, to all these teachers, and we're servicing them, and we're very proud of our product.
Mr. Morgan? Mr. Cantor? Mr. Borillo?
Right now, you're presently approved for 340 students, correct? Was that, is that, was that the original?
Original, by the original, the...
The original, something like that?
Yes.
The original use variance?
Yes, sir.
Was the building designed with that in mind?
It's a different building, the, the building was much bigger. We designed a building which was almost twice the, twice the size when we did that, and that's what we designed that building for. We cut down the size of the building, appropriate to the size of the school that we're having.
So the, so with 340 students, you were gonna be around 70,000 square feet combined with?
It was 68, what was it? 60, 60-something thousand, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Just a quick question, uh, the tuition is expensive, is irregular, if you compare with the other schools, how is the tuition, is very expensive or no?
Compared to the other schools, we, we're basically equal to the other schools.
No.
We're not more expensive tuition-wise than the others.
Now, assuming that you interview students, and they are very talented, very smart people, but they don't have money, what they can do?
We don't take in our students based on their financial capabilities. We take in our students, and we have to, sometimes we have to raise the shortfall. We have a dinner coming up, everyone's invited, end of July, and that keeps us funded for the rest of the year.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Charlie, we're good? Christine?
At this time, yes.
Yeah, um, you know, I think at the last hearing we had for this, there was a question about like, you know, what's the need for the reduction in the enrollment and, you know, implications on the septic design? I had some comments, and I think the updated letter that I issued today. I know they have an approval for a septic system for the site, uh, that was approved by the Board of Health in June of 2023, that's based off of a certain enrollment and everything like that. I would just ask that, uh, you know, should this board rule favorably on the application? Any conditions that were, and representations as far as no food prep and all that kind of stuff? They made a condition to the approval, and that they have to get the final blessing from Board of Health prior to like, building permits for the, for the, for the structure? I think they had questions about, you know, the coffee rooms and the dining room and the food prep and things like that, whether things have sinks for wash downs and waste can change the septic demand versus if it's just, you know, tables for, you know, putting things together and putting it on a plate, so...
So we've reduced the size of the building, and they've got permission for septic for the reduce, the reduced size?
Correct, and just get final sign-off from Board of Health prior to issuance of any building permits for the, for the structure. I think they just wanted to see, um, like, for the kitchen area, actual fixtures and things like that, you know, showing that there's no sinks for waste and things like that. Is that something the applicant's amenable to, Mr. Pape?
We are amenable to all of the conditions that you have outlined, and anticipate that if the board acted favorably, we're gonna see all of these conditions in the resolution.
Have you heard enough? Okay.
I want to begin by thanking you for staying so late this evening, and I think getting the four witnesses in was very helpful. When can we come back?
Eileen? November. No.
I don't know, I mean, July 22nd is our next meeting, and there's four applications. One is just an extension of time, which is short. One is a minor subdivision use variance that was already approved, it's just being modified slightly. One's a bulk variance, I don't know if we wanna try to put this on and get it out of the way first, or...
How many more witnesses do we have? We have Mr. Z...
Mr. Zogner will return to, to address the open engineering issues. Scott Kennel will return, his testimony is going to say half as many students, same circulation, same parking lot, same bus loading area.
And we're gonna see the new septic field and where it goes?
We have that to present to you.
Alright.
And then, then Christine Cofone, our professional planner.
Do you wanna try July 22nd?
If you're willing to place us on the agenda that evening, we'd be most grateful to say yes.
Yeah.
Wanna give me the names of the attorneys I'm bumping, so that I can...
No, it's, it's not you.
Okay, we would be most pleased to come back on the 22nd.
Yeah, and the others, Blewett shouldn't be that bad. Jessica Basset, a house on an undersized lot.
We're good.
And it's Turkish-American, which, they're the ones that maybe I would...
It is on the 31st, it's okay.
But they're less anyway, so, I think they're perfect.
So if you carry this to the 22nd, we're ready to return.
We're good?
July 22nd.
Okay, so, application BA 19-23 SP, Yashivas Emek Hattara Inc. This application is being carried to July 22nd with no further notice, and expiration date still August 31, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, all board members, thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Eileen, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.